Got about one minute and folks are still joining. I'm going to give it about another 30 seconds. It's just about everybody's entered. Okay, if anybody else enters, I'll just admit them as we go. And I guess I'll start by saying hello and happy Tuesday, everybody. For those who are joining us via Zoom or physically present in city council chambers, of course, you'll be given the opportunity to participate in the public comment portion of this evening's meetings, of course, to address the city council on matters that are specifically on tonight's agenda. You'll be called upon to speak after the city council has been given the opportunity to discuss the topic with staff. Members of the public that are seated in the city council chambers listening to the meeting, they'll be afforded the opportunity to provide public comments in accordance with the procedures that are applicable to public comment in an in-person meeting of the city council. Namely, members of the public must be signed in before the meeting is started. Public comment will also be afforded to those who are joining us virtually here on the conference line, so long as you've provided your contact credentials and the subject matter for which you'd like to speak about before the deadline, which is noted on this evening's agenda that you should see up on the monitor. And lastly, any written comments that were submitted prior to the meeting will also be read after that topic has been discussed by the council. If you are one of those that did sign in, we ask that you please keep the comments to five minutes in length. And those comments should be addressed to the council as a whole through the mayor. And of course, profanity will not be accepted. Having covered all of that, I think it's definitely appropriate that we get started, since there are seven topics that we'll cover this evening. The first topic regarding the capital improvement program, which is forecasted to cover fiscal year 2021 through 2025. Finance Director Gallagher, I understand you'll have a presentation, I think PowerPoint, that's accompanying your discussion this evening. So what we'll do is queue it up so you can have the screen when you are ready. You just let me know.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I'm ready to go. And...
And then you should be able to just share the screen.
Okay. Bear with me for just one moment.
No worries. Take your time. What I can do is I can always stop my screen share as well. And then on your menu bar, you should see where it says share. Go ahead and pull that up.
Thank you. And just bear with me for just a moment. For some reason, I'm not able to, but now I see it. Thank you.
Sometimes it takes a moment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So thank you, Mayor and City Council. On our screen tonight, we have, if you can see my screen. And Mayor, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. It is also in the packet. We have our PowerPoint presentation for you tonight for the five-year capital improvements program in financial forecasts for fiscal years 21 to 2025. It is a PowerPoint presentation tonight, but there is a link to the actual CIP document, which is called the Capital Improvement Program. And we have a link in the agenda packet to the city's website. And it's also under the Government Transparency Portal. And tonight, we also included in the council packet, the Budget Planning Calendar, recommendations for the Capital Improvements Committee, and also the CIP PowerPoint presentation. So I'm going to get started tonight with the presentation. As we have discussed before, the CIP is a financial planning tool. And it really is intended only to be a snapshot into our future needs, capital needs for the city of Rolling Meadows. While it is just a snapshot, we look forward five years in this plan, but I can tell you that departments are looking way beyond that, anywhere from 10 to 20 plus years. And each individual project does continue to be evaluated through the entire process. And ultimately, if made into the budget, it is ultimately made as an approval through the city council when it is, the contract is awarded. And again, there's always time for public comment and other opportunities therein. COVID-19 this year, with the COVID-19 pandemic, it has presented challenges, but there are also opportunities that we're looking at as well, because we are able to reprioritize and reevaluate the entire city's capital projects. As part of our resiliency planning here at the city, we hold the line due to fiscal uncertainty. We are also looking at any type of way that we can maximize our dollars for the city's residents and businesses. The Capital Improvements Committee has reviewed all of the projects within the Capital Improvement Plan. And tonight, we're going to be reviewing recommendations to the city council from the committee. The city council has discussed budget and capital improvement program parameters at a recent committee, the whole meeting. And we have been following that through the 2021 CIP. The CIP is reviewed every single year with the Capital Improvements Committee, but then also with the city council. And not every project makes it into the proposed budget. There will be changes from the CIP over to the proposed budget. The capital plan does review all capital projects in the 911 Fund, Utilities Fund, Vehicle Equipment Replacement Fund, Building and Land Fund, the State Motor Fuel Tax Fund, and the Local Road Fund. Just as a reminder that the Police Department vehicles are budgeted in the General Fund, and we'll talk about that in a second, but just remember that those were decided by city council as a commodity item, because they do not have a long-term useful life. We typically rotate them through about a three-year plan. So they're budgeted in the General Fund, but we do show them in the capital plan so that you can see the detailed look to them. I did want to comment on the capital plan itself. It is a very large document. What we try to do is give a project description with each page. There is a lot of information, but we're here tonight to really summarize it for you and to provide this for your feedback and consideration. So continuing on, some of the high priority items this year relates to the water main replacement projects that have been taking place throughout the city of Rolling Meadows. These projects are going to improve water capacity, fire protection coverage, and system reliability for our residents and our businesses. Particularly, these three projects were part of our entire bond issuance that took place in 2019 for the Waverly Park Weber Drive area, Arbor Drive, South Street, Plum Grove Drive. Those three projects are being paid for by cities issued bonds or general obligation bonds. They are important investments into our city's underground utilities, and they'll continue through to 2021. Most of the projects are going to be completed in 2020. And they are all following our bond ordinance requirements. Overall, when we look at our local road fund, and we're going to talk about that a little bit, we are always looking to see how we can maximize dollars to that fund. We have a diverse makeup of revenue sources, but more review and revenues are necessary because that fund does have a need to pay out certain projects for grant-funded projects, and then we don't receive reimbursement for some time. So there's always a need for more funding for the local road fund. Chargebacks are not at their full funding, although we did try to adjust wherever possible to make sure that we stabilize our funds. The Capital Improvements Committee, again, did review the projects for the year, and we'll talk about their recommendations. This is the eighth year of the Capital Improvements Committee's work for the city of Rolling Meadows. And we appreciate their recommendations and their thoughtful process. The Capital Improvements Committee members, we have Alderman Laura Sanoyka, Alderman John Diastis. We have resident members, Bob Lash, Steve Hollish, and Jack Elithirio, our Public Works Director, Rob Horn, and myself, who serve on the committee. And we really appreciate and thank them for their time and efforts. The committee also does extend our appreciation, appreciation over to Elizabeth Payne, our Administrative Services Coordinator for Public Works and Community Development. Elizabeth takes all of the minutes and also prepares other items for the committee. We appreciate that. The committee typically meets monthly. There were a couple delays. On this slide, you'll see that we did cancel a couple of meetings while we kind of understood what we were going to be doing during the virtual time period. So we started our meetings virtual, and we'll continue that along how the city council also meets to make sure that we're continuing our meetings. So most likely, our September and October meetings will be virtual, too. On the next slide, this is the recommendations to the city council. And I do want to just kind of review them on a high level. Each year, the committee does review the capital projects in quite depth, in detail and depth. And at the end of the time period, from January till July, all of the minutes and information that are taken along the way are then prepared as recommendations to the city council so that the city council can have a high-level detail of how to proceed and think about the direction going forward. Then they also look at other things that might be useful to the city council to make informed decisions. One of the biggest focus of the Capital Improvements Committee are the dollars invested for the annual street program. And this first recommendation has changed just a little bit to show more of a range contingent on available resources, obviously taking into consideration our COVID-19 uncertainty. And so while we had a maximum thought process in the past, the committee suggests to the city council that the annual street program has a minimum range of about $1 million to $1.5 million based on available resources. Again, with the annual street program, item number two for the planning calendar, which is really important so that dollars are maximized over the long term, the planning that takes place in the fall and winter months will help save dollars on the engineering side. And that process takes place in September each year. And savings has been demonstrated through this process by changing the methodology of getting the engineering and other items ahead of time and maximizing ahead of schedule. The third recommendation is to develop a plan. And it really takes a look at, and this was related to the COVID-19 issues, is really looking at the year-end priorities for 2020 and quickly making adjustments if we need to. Public Works Director Horn, City Manager Crumstock, and myself are looking at the plan as more of a flexible plan, should we, the need arise for us to take out a project and move it down the list or defer it, and to give us that flexibility within our priorities. And then also to make those recommendations for 2021. So the point of number three is really to make sure that we have a flexible plan, that we can adjust on a quick basis. The fourth item is to make sure we're informing our residents and our businesses of the capital improvements, project updates, and other items, and to keep the website fresh and up to date, and that's being done. To keep information out in the news and views and other ways to communicate with residents, to keep them engaged and fully informed as to how their tax dollars are working. As part of the rate stabilization, this item, we want to continue this as a recommendation and just as a review that the utilities rates for 2020 were not increased. And also for 2021, they will not be increased for the utilities fund, an important part of the rate stabilization. And item number six is to continue the city's stormwater management plan and review possible additions to projects where possible as part of the overall plan. Thinking back to the rainy season that we had beginning in May, those are the types of things that the committee is looking at to see what the overall plan is overall and to find out what adjustments can be made as part of the overall planning process to address areas of concern in the city for stormwater management. And this is a new recommendation for this year to the city council. And finally, just making sure that it is known that the working and planning document is part of the process and understanding that this is a flexible document and that we're here to provide recommendations to the city council and then also assist the budget process. So that in a nutshell covers the review of the capital improvement recommendations to the city council. And as we move along, feel free to jump in and ask questions. I won't spend as much detailed time on each slide, but I did want to emphasize the importance of their work. And if there's anything of concern or additions that you would like to add to the process, feel free to let us know as well. The next slide covers our city's debt service for a general obligation bonds chart. And I would just point out the fact that over time, our debt service requirements year over year will be going down. Even though we did issue debt in 2018 and 2019, our debt service payments annually about $2.3 million. And beginning in 2024, it'll be approximately $1.8 million overall across all funds. This slide here will show you, and it's also in the capital plan, sort of at a glance as to where the funds are allocated, meaning that this is a plan. Again, it's just a snapshot. But if you look at all of the capital projects in the plan itself, you'll see the categories. And I think it's really important to show and demonstrate to our residents and our community that streets are a priority. When you look at the annual street program currently proposed at $1.9 million across the local road fund and the MFT fund. In addition to that, our streets and sidewalk program at 1.7, that's about 38% of the funding for the year allocated for roads and things to maintain the roads. And in addition to that, water, sewer, and stormwater projects are always a priority. And those are clearly listed in the pie chart as well. But it's important to see that overall, $9.3 million is proposed for 2021. Again, many of these projects are proposed, but at the end of the day, the proposed budget may not contain all of these projects. Some of them may start in 2021, but they may not be fully budgeted. And so because a capital project might span a couple of years, just know that there will be differences between the CIP and the budget. But at this point in time, as we look at the snapshot, $9.3 million investment into infrastructure for the city of Rolling Meadows. As discussed, moving on, for the General Fund, the only item that really is capital, when we think about it, really isn't capital, because I mentioned that the police vehicles are budgeted in the General Fund. We do like to have a project page for each one. So if you turned open the CIP, you would see a project page for each police department vehicle. When we allocate these funds, I did want to mention for the General Fund for 2021, there are two police department vehicles proposed that will be budgeted in the General Fund. The original plan did have three proposed, but due to COVID-19, we are deferring one vehicle to an outline year. Moving on to the 911 Fund, just as a reminder for everybody in the audience, 911 covers all of the city's emergency dispatch and emergency needs. It is based 100% on a tax levy into the fund. And this fund typically, the two items that typically are paid out of this fund would be anything related to emergency capital items. And the one that is coming up for the 911 Fund is the Emergency Dispatch Services or the CAD. The CAD improvement comes from our Northwest Central Dispatch Service. And we contract that service out for emergency dispatch communication services. And for budgeted purposes for 2021, the project is, has been deferred due to their timeline on the side of Northwest Central Dispatch. But the major purpose by Northwest Central Dispatch will be for the Mobile CAD and Records Management System for the police and fire departments. And so the project is set to start in 2021 or 2020 with, to be completed in 2021, but we are obviously on their timeline. And as a reminder, this fund does have a fund balance policy. And I'm just turning back a slide to show you that right now, we're a little bit below that target, which is about one year's worth of expenses as fund balance. We're a little bit lower than that, but the fund does build back over time because of this capital improvement. That is the reason why it goes down slightly. The next fund, which is our Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Fund, which does maintain all of our fleets in terms of vehicles. And then also for equipment, the Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Fund has chargebacks in from other funds as revenue. And then the expenditures is the only thing that comes out of that fund are capital improvements or capital purchases for vehicles and equipment. The fund balance right now is, was adjusted slightly due to COVID in terms of, we have some deferrals, and I'll talk about that. We did not fully increase chargebacks, but there was a slight chargeback increase for particularly for equipment to make sure that we're funding the equipment portion per the requirements of the fund. I did want to talk about the sixth year of repayment. It's a footnote on this slide. It's important to remember that we are in a repayment from the General Fund to the Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Fund of $100,000 per year. And that's based on our budget parameters in other audited discussions that we've had. In this slide, the Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Fund shows the listing of the projects for the year. And I'm not going to go through these in detail, but what we did do for you is make sure we footnoted which projects were deferred from 2020. And those projects are now shown in 2021, but just know that there were some projects that, when I say projects, vehicles, and equipment, that were moved from 2021 to outline years. So I didn't make that footnote, but I did want to let you know which ones were deferred from 2020. And then we rebalanced to make sure that we were able to fund per the amount coming in to the Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Fund. We are comfortable with what shows on this slide, which ranges from vehicles to equipment and also upgrades and improvements for our AV equipment and also the continuance of the ERP project. And so I wanted to just leave this slide here for a moment, only because I just want to touch base and let you know that each one of these slides, again, is in the CIP document, which corresponds to each project page. Moving on to the Building and Land Fund, the Building and Land Fund pays for all of the city's maintenance and infrastructure improvements for the city's buildings and anything that relates to parking lots, for instance, or anything that relates to commodities such as paper towels or toilet paper for the city. All of that is paid for the Building and Land Fund. The revenues in are charges for services or what we call chargebacks. And the largest expenditure out of this fund would be for capital. About more than 60% goes to capital. And other first, other items are supplies and contractual services. As an example, contractual services would be landscaping is paid out of the Building and Land Fund. This fund balance has been stabilized. If you recall, last year, the city council amended the city's budget, and we were able to transfer funds over from the General Fund for building, the Building and Land Fund. So this fund does have fund balance and needs to continue to ensure there are reserves for the Building and Land Fund. There were a few projects that were deferred from 2020 to 2021. And mostly, these projects deal with maintenance of infrastructure and some building modifications for 2021. Again, each project, while listed here, may not make it fully into the proposed budget. And again, the city council would have the ultimate authority to approve any project through resolution process. But for 2021, the items that are listed here relate mostly to maintenance and also infrastructure improvements in terms of making sure that we're maintaining our buildings. There were a few, again, mentioned that were deferred from 2020. The Utilities Fund, our second-largest operating fund for the city, accumulates revenues from fees. It is considered an enterprise fund, so the fees coming into the fund are from users, and we call users customers. And the customers pay their utility bills for water, sewer, refuse, water, sewer, and stormwater. Refuse is accounted in a different fund. So those charges into the Utilities Fund, we have adjusted slightly due to COVID-19. Obviously, there are water bills that are substantial from the consumer side in terms of businesses. We've adjusted slightly due to the vacancies that are happening right now due to folks working remotely. But then we've also noticed that there's increases on the residential side for water usage. But we have modified our revenue estimates on downward trend at this point in time into 2021 and ending for 2020 as well. What that does for the fund is that we did need to readjust and realign the capital improvement projects and make other changes in supplies and contractual as much as we possibly could. The largest expenditure, when you're looking at expenses for this fund, is the amount that we pay for our water supply from the city of Chicago or the, what we call the Jawa Water Supply. About 30% of the fund goes to supplying water for the city of Rolling Meadows. The next largest item of expenditures would be capital, the capital improvements that we pay for through the Utilities Fund. This slide shows you in detail, and again, each one of these line items has a project page. I'm not going to go through each line item, but I did want to, again, mention that we do a footnote here just to show you what was deferred to 2020, from 2020 to 2021. I would want to footnote as well that although some projects might start in 2021, sometimes they are not fully completed to the next fiscal year. So while it might be budgeted completely in 2021, just remember that's where some of that flexibility will be coming in to see if we need to adjust going forward. If the project cannot completely finish in one year, if we have to finish it in the next year. We have routine projects that we need to do for maintenance and infrastructure improvements. But then there's obviously the largest share would be water main replacements. We have sewer projects, sanitary sewer projects. Our typical projects, such as the manhole rehabilitation program. We also have investments in our GIS technology. And then also, just a footnote that as a recommendation, again, back to the stormwater management issues and projects, we have an annual stormwater rehabilitation program. But we did take a look at different opportunities for funding. And there is a federal funding opportunity for park street drainage improvements, and that's listed here. And then we're also looking at other opportunities to see what we can do to enhance and address those concerns for stormwater. And again, for 2021, there are no rate increases for the Utilities Fund. Moving on to the road improvements, and I think this is Moving on to the road improvements, and I think this is an important slide to just kind of show at a glance the entire road program. When you think about that, we look at it between two funds, and we thought maybe add a slide to show you the total road funding pie in terms of what is the largest share of funds coming in for roads? And that would be our property taxes, followed by grants and reimbursements. And then we have a new program from the state of Illinois called the Build Illinois Bonds Program, our natural gas tax, our state motor fuel tax, and then also the new additional allotment for the state motor fuel tax, our home motor fuel tax, and then we have a county road and bridge program as well. It's important to see the diversity. Again, we always look at it as a complete program, but it's important to note that capital expenditures account for three-quarters of all of the improvements. We do have other things such as snow removal supplies that come out of roads funding as well. And so that's the total look when you look at roads all in. When you break it down between the two funds, the first fund is the state motor fuel tax based on per capita, and that means that our share based on our population, we receive money from the state of Illinois. We were lucky enough to receive the Build Illinois program that started this year in terms of the revenue coming in. We'll start planning for road reconstruction projects for 2021. And then we also have the state motor fuel tax funds coming in for that. It is a local distributed fund, and we do have to keep an eye on that, just because the fact, changes from the state of Illinois can happen quickly. But at this point, the funds that we're seeing coming in are stable to a point. But I would mention that there is about a 25% decrease in the overall MFT revenues. For example, the city did budget about $600,000. We're looking at about $440,000 coming in. So there was good and bad. There was a decrease overall because folks are not driving as much and not going to work. But then on the other side, on the plus side, we had the additional allotment coming in from the state, plus the Build Illinois Bonds. So we're fortunate in that regard, but we're continuing to monitor that. So again, this slide just kind of summarizes those three allotments that we received from the state of Illinois. There are very strict rules that we have to follow, and they have to be restricted for certain capital projects approved by the Illinois Department of Transportation. And moving on to the local road fund, the largest share of what we would call our road funding program. We have a pie chart, which might be a little difficult to see, but it is in your packet as well, just kind of, again, showing you the different types of revenues in, and I went through those. And then the largest amount of this road fund pays for capital, and then also the annual street program as well. And I mentioned at the top of the presentation that all-in, the annual street program at this point in time, the way we're looking at it to be proposed, and again, that can be modified as we work towards finalizing the proposed budget, but approximately 1.9 million for the annual street program, and that would be something that we're still looking at at this point in time. The Capital Improvements Committee has focused a lot of their time reviewing and giving recommendations to us in their viewpoint. There is a breakdown on this slide showing the funding is primarily provided by property tax levy. And at some point, while we're holding the line on the property tax levy, we would like to have that grow over time to ensure full funding for roads. But at this time, that's on something the city is proposing. Again, that's because many of the projects are grant-funded, and so when they're grant-funded, we have to outlay the cash first and then get reimbursed later. So there were some projects that were deferred. This proposed capital project for 2021 does show you a listing of all of the capital projects for roads. And again, a couple of those projects, or more than a couple, were deferred, and we're still reviewing all of the final projects. It is really important to remember that there are some things that are state requirements, that are federal requirements. And one of those, for instance, are ADA plan requirements, bridge repairs. Those are the kinds of things that we absolutely have to do every year. So I'm moving on to the summary page here, and I just wanted to close just real quickly that, again, this is just a snapshot in time. It's not a proposed budget. We want to provide this information so that the plan has flexibility, and it's built into the plan. And should we have the need to have to reprioritize the projects and defer additional projects, we have the flexibility to do so. Again, it provided us an opportunity to do that. It is considered a best practice out in our field in a municipality to prepare a capital improvements plan and update it regularly, and use it as a working document and not just prepare it and put it on a shelf. It is a necessary document for our city and our residents and businesses. Outside funding agencies such as IDOT want to see that capital project listed in it if they are going to be funding it. The city's auditors review it. Our credit rating agencies such as Standard and Poor's review it, and many others. And as a footnote, our proposed budget for 2021 will be released at the September 8 City Council meeting and posted on the city's website. And budget meetings will start in September. And just as a reminder, a final reminder, at some point, I'll be reaching out to the mayor and city council to set up one-on-one meetings for the budget, but that's the budget. So in summary, I just wanted to close with, this is the capital improvements program, and we're happy to take any questions or comments at this point in time.
Thank you, Director Gallagher, for the presentation and for the accompanying information that came with each slide. By show of hand from the council, is there any questions, comments, or concerns? Alderman O'Brien.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Director Gallagher, thanks, kudos for all the great work. Just, I would want to reconfirm or add my thoughts on it for the great work that Alderman Diastis and Sanoyka and the rest of the committee did. I certainly second and support, I'm sure all of us received numerous phone calls in the spring and summer regarding the stormwater, so it was great to see recommendations six on that going forward. So I would definitely be in favor of that staying on there for, as we look at the budget for 2021. Anything we can do for the stormwater certainly would be in support of it, based on the calls we received from residents and provided the feedback to the team. So thanks for getting that in there and the great work with the group that took over and looked at this. That's all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you for the feedback.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Sanoyka.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to follow up with Alderman O'Brien's comment and state that in addition to these recommendations, there was some discussion that's present in the minutes from the committee minutes of the report, and it includes an explanation from Director Horn, where he outlines the different approach that we will probably be, that we would like to take as a city, from very localized, shared cost projects to something that's more comprehensive. If Director Horn is present tonight, if he would like to speak on that transition, I would like to give the floor to him.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. If you could provide me a little additional information, I know we spoke about many things, just to clarify that I answered the right item?
Understood. So in some of the minutes at one of the meetings in June, we talked about how, I believe it was June, it may have been July, but I believe it was June, where in the past, if there was a resident that was experiencing stormwater retention issues due to land grading from other residents or for some other reason, then the city would work with the resident and the surrounding residents for a cost-sharing approach. And it was found that this was not necessarily an effective approach to fixing stormwater management, and that instead, the city was going to approach these issues as more of a hotspot type of approach, where we're looking at the city as a whole as opposed to just a couple of residents.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. You're absolutely correct. So in the past, what had been done is, Alderman Sanoyka hit it right on the head, is we would respond to a single complaint, and what would end up happening is on, in a block or in an area, we would have, you know, 20 different single-family residential systems, storm sewer systems not working together. So we are starting to track our drainage concerns based on the ability to include them in a comprehensive repair or improvement. We're going to use GIS to track that data and develop, as Alderman Sanoyka said, hotspots in the community, and we will look at those areas comprehensively and design a system that can accommodate a, maybe a whole city block. Our philosophy moving forward is to create public improvements that enable residents to help themselves as opposed to trying to build little residential improvements in residents' backyards. So our goal moving forward is to put systems in the right way or in a dedicated easement that will allow them to connect a small residential system to it to take care of their own residential concerns. So thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. That hopefully answers the question.
It does provide that additional information that I wanted to share, because I know I also have some residents that are tuning in tonight and have been very vocal about the stormwater issues in their area and how we'll be approaching this, these issues going forward. Thank you again to everyone that had submitted pictures and descriptions of all of the storm issues that they've encountered, and if you continue to do that, we can track them as a city. And so we do appreciate that partnership with residents going forward. Thank you.
Also, if I can add, Alderman Sanoyka, that giant list of addresses you gave us has made it into our GIS, and we are tracking those properties.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I yield my time.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. Thank you, Director Horn. By show of hand, are there any other members of the council who have any questions, comments, And if not, then Director Gallagher, we'll just keep you with the screen for now. You can just put anything you want. I understand you'll be back with the new billing system update after we first discuss COVID-19 in the city of Rolling Meadows through Manager Crumstock.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Obviously, what you have before you, I'm going to actually talk a little bit differently. So if anybody is reading through it, I hope you see some of the information. I'm actually going to try making it a little quicker than a four-page document. But obviously, when this started on March 20th, staff has been very active. I call it a journey, but it's been a real learning experience, and I do want to mention a few of those items when we get to that, too. But just to start, obviously, near the end of the report, I do mention, and it's really, thank you, it's a final note from me, because obviously, there's staff that's been working left and right on different things. But you really have to really thank the department heads, but specifically, Fire Department Chief Rick Acosta, who's actually on the phone call, Fire Lieutenant Ben Dwyer, Lisa Norton, Don Wenzel, Deb Osterleid, and obviously, Finance Director Melissa Gallagher. They've actually stepped up. They've spent more time. They've spent a lot of time with me, obviously, with doing pieces. But you also have to thank Cook County. They provided to the city of Rolling Meadows about $60,000 worth of PPEs at this point in time. They've closed down their warehouses to us, and they've really made that requirement that you really need about 60 days' worth of PPEs. And the requirement for staff was that you're either having a 60-day supply of the PPEs or your burn rate for about 60 days, because they might be a little bit different. But we keep on watching those kind of things. Obviously, since we've been open, some of the things have actually changed. But with that $60,000 worth of PPEs from Cook County, we've also utilized about $30,000 to supplement supplies. Now with that, when you look at the wages that we've been able to attribute as assigned to COVID-19 work, at the end of July, we've identified $130,000. Why is this important? Because the city of Rolling Meadows is going to be filing with the federal government through FEMA, and then we are also filing with Cook County to obviously reimburse ourselves the best that we can, but 100% is what we're trying to. But with FEMA, it's a period of time that's shorter, but Cook County is giving us the ability to file all the way through December. So we continue doing certain purchases, we continue doing some other upgrades, but at the same point in time, we still have the availability. And some of those webinars continue on through Cook County, but also some of their requirements. And again, when you talk about when this all started, you know, half of March, April, May, June, maybe around 20% or something as high as 25% was being used by certain staff to actually deal with this COVID-19. In July, it's dropped all the way down to probably 15%. In August, maybe 5% to 10% for myself, but it depends on what the issue is. Cook County keeps on having it more and more meetings. But again, when you look at some of the individuals that I mentioned before, they're still about 15, maybe 20% if they're pushing it, on some of the work that we're doing to make sure that our financials are ready to be filed, some of the ones that have been filed, and also some of the other items that we need to do. Now, there are certain departments that are not doing as much, obviously, not to pick on the police department, but they're pretty much in a status quo. So other than Chief Nowacki and I, and Deputy Chief Searcher and I having conversations about what needs to be done, making sure about their PPEs, you know, they're probably down to 2% to 5%, but at the same point in time, we're still dealing with some of the additional things. But Fire Department, again, still continues working on some of our additional finance with some of the other pieces that I mentioned. Public Works, again, they're coming into every building, they're wiping down surfaces, doorknobs, and some of the other pieces. But when you look at some of the best practices that we've actually looked at, we did allow remote work for certain departments and certain personnel. Obviously, and I never hope that I'm jinxing something or doing something else, but if we fell back into Phase 1 or Phase 2, if we allowed remote work, it would be specifically, you're here certain days, and then once you're here, you're here for the whole day, not just here for a half day, and then you're working remote from a different period of time. In administration, obviously, most of you know that we were here pretty much every day. I was here every day. Deb was here every day. So we never stopped being here, even if we had someone remote for a period of time. We were watching our social distancing and also watching some of the other pieces. But if you look in, and again, I'm not going to read the entire document that I created that you can read through, but if you really look at the main things that we've done for COVID-19 in the city of Rolling Meadows, operations, supply chain management, infrastructure, the responses that we've dealt with, but also the primary objectives with any of this COVID-19, and again, it was an interesting time with life safety and employees and the public. And again, with the employees, Fire Department on a daily, and they still deal with this daily, they have PPEs, and they have some of their new protocols that were set up. And we do appreciate Chief Moxley, and as I said, Deputy Chief Rick Acosta, and obviously, Lieutenant Dwyer, who's put on a whole bunch of different things that we've been able to accomplish in the Fire Department to keep our employees safe. But also, you look at the incident stabilization, the limiting the spread that we can do, communications, notifications, support of vital functions of government, we are in the central need, and we've been here. Even when we had the doors closed at City Hall, we still were providing those essential, and we did have still people making requests to come in. We would meet with them in safe and secure. We had for community development that we were still dropping off permits up in the front. I was playing mailman at some point, that's just my side comment, that you would go down and make sure, because the doors were closed and what was being dropped off. But the communication with, even with our split shifts and split people in different buildings, and obviously, we've mentioned how we use 16, we made sure that obviously the high-quality services and the professionalism was continuing on. But when you look at it, we've also been very, very conscious about obtaining PPEs and all of our other pieces that we need to make sure that we're safe and secure. But when you look at alternate citywide staffing modules, it really depended on the department, but also if we could keep that social distancing available. And obviously, if you have an office or you have a hallway, it's a little bit different. But at the same point in time, if you're working on a cubes, how do you protect and actually do that? So we made sure that, for Alderman who've made it through City Hall, we actually put in Plexiglas, and we closed up some of our counters, we also split some of our staff. But we've also been working on some of those other best practices that we see. And I know that I mentioned decontamination of spaces and equipment. We can continue to do that, but also, we've used UVC light wave technology. Obviously, we have one for the ambulances, that you put it in the back of the ambulance, and then about 10 to 15 minutes, it obviously and then about 10, 15 minutes, it obviously does a decontamination. That's even after, after every call, it's being decantaminated, that patient area. But also we put in, uh, a system, a UVC, um, light wave, if you want to call it again, into the council chambers because that is a standalone HVAC. And obviously, for staff, we've had more meetings in that, uh, council chambers. We do have it set up for a lot more that we do because again, it is probably the safer area with its own HVAC, the HIPAA, and also now the UVAC. But we are continuing looking at some of those, um, ideas in life safety for the employees. But, and you'll see in about a week from next meeting, if Public Works finishes the write-up, we're also talking about it doing some additional UV installation on our big HVAC, which does the first floor, second floor, and obviously some of the other pieces. Again, continuing trying to look at that. I know that certain aldermen know that I've also done research on ozone and a whole bunch of other little, um, areas that you can do. They just don't work on our old system or they don't work with how our corridors are created, but we continue looking for the health and safety of those kind of things. We do look at what other municipalities do for their best practices. Um, some of them are closing down during the day and then they do a decontamination of all their different sites. Again, we've just kept it open because we believe that what we have in place right now, um, has been very fortunate that we are keeping ourselves safe. And we'll tell you that we used to have more runners, walkers come into City Hall and use our restrooms. We do not see that anymore, so people are being very conscious about what we're doing here. Um, IT, obviously with Kelly and Wasim, we're down to two. Um, and again, we're in the process of getting a third person. But Wasim and Kelly were very active allowing remote access and providing employees to support those city functions. Um, there's only two people and they did watch their time and with their social distancing. Um, and again, even right now with the IT department, they are videotaping, if you want to call it that, but they're both together at this point in time with masks and all the protections that we can make sure with everything else. Public access to essential city services, we're always made sure, and I know that certain aldermen started seeing Saturday use with Public Works, with street sweeping and some others, that was the split shift. And, you know, some of them are working from Tuesday through Saturday. We've also been making sure that we were able to make sure that any of our Open Meetings Act and our adjudication were being done or if we needed to cancel for a period of time. We've had decontamination, disinfecting, as I said before, not just the, uh, equipment because the Public Works Department does have a UV wand that they've been able to use in vehicles recently too. Um, we do look at retooling and building up the policies and procedures for duty exposures and also COVID, um, 19 injuries, but Irma's also been very active with some of those things. We've also looked at how do you do your extended operations in the fall and a 12-month out? What happens if we fall back into it? What would we actually learn from that too? We've also had, um, schedules change, procedures implemented in the departments that would allow for some of this spatial, um, recognition, but also making sure that everything is being done. We've also been able to designate work areas and spaces that are cleaned and actually watched. And as, as I mentioned before, the council chambers are being utilized more than ever because again, it's a larger space, we're able to social distance plus with the, uh, UVC and the HIPAA with what we had before. Um, and again, we do follow some of the other CDC-approved chemicals and we do watch that. Um, face coverings, we do have, obviously throughout, all employees were, um, issued masks, but we also were, um, given gaiters. Um, and obviously employees purchase their own if they want additional, or as many of you know, depending on the week, what kind of gaiter I have or what kind of mask I have, depending on how I feel and I do deal with that. Obviously, in the report, we do talk about when this was, um, in place for a period of time, we were having daily, weekly, if you want to call it, additional meetings with staff and with our, um, emergency management group and some of the increased information and then just some additional work that we were doing. So again, we're back into a little bit different. Our supply chain workflow was internal, but we also worked with each of the departments to make sure that we were sharing, that we had enough and everything else. It's kind of interesting, as Mayor Gallow knows and a few aldermen know, when we actually started on this process, um, we did have a limited amount of, um, N95 masks. We did have a limited number of, um, gloves. Um, I say limited, but it was our usual stuff, but there was already purchases. Some of them are older. Um, you just had to watch the rubber bands, uh, for the mask and some of the other pieces. So we started a little bit differently than some of other municipalities that didn't have any supplies. And obviously here, we typically do have hand, um, sanit, hand sanitizers and we've typically have had some of the other items that we started in a better place. But just like most places, hand wipes and sanitizer wipes, we did start with it, but we're having the same issue that people are now having. Where can you find it? Where do you have it? But again, we do have an inventory that we're utilizing. We did use preferred vendors and we do, um, thank School Health, who is actually in the city of Rolling Meadows now. They were actually an avenue that we did use for some hand wipes and obviously some other items that we were unable to get in some of the other areas quickly and also allowing it. We did use, um, the N95 mask decontamination services that the state of Illinois created. Um, approximately, um, I want to say in the middle of August, I got this number, but we've had about 400 masks that have been returned to us. The success rate for the decontamination that is being utilized is about 75%. So we don't get every mask, but, but the, it helps us with our N95. We've also been pooling and sharing resources. We've also done a donation management. Um, obviously, we've had a lot of residents and businesses who donated to stuff. Um, the mobile on Euclid Avenue, he actually donated to us, um, kits that had mask gloves and we still utilize that. And obviously PD has a lot of those things, but we do appreciate everything that residents and, um, businesses were donating to us. We've also hardened in our point-to-distribution plan and we look at some of those other items, can we continue hardening? And again, I go back to our front counters look a little bit different from before when we were wide open. Now there is glass and there's Plexiglas and different work areas that we have. The barriers are really, are at points of services, desk counters, but we are trying to make sure about some of the other pieces. The filters that I mentioned, the UVC filters, we continue looking into, and you'll see this next week hopefully, that, um, if not at the next council meeting, the next one, but we're trying to push that into some others. Signage and barriers, we continue control access to both staff and customers. Um, we do have a few individuals who've asked us for masks and thanks to the census masks that we now have, we've been able to distribute those too. Um, we are really limiting some of our non-essential personnel and visitors to the city buildings. We do know that we are taking more appointments as people come in there. I do want to mention that there was a third-party vendor. Um, it was a retired fire chief who started a business and he was doing decontamination of fire stations. Um, Chief Moxley and Deputy Chief Rick Acosta found out about him. He actually decontaminated, fogged, if you want to call it, um, both of our fire stations. Plus he came here to City Hall where we have the Police Department and he did the full, um, entire City Hall from top to bottom. I apologize to the Mayor that some of his papers I had to move and, uh, they were a little damp from the fog, but if you weren't here, you didn't know. Um, we do look at that as another benefit with a third party who really came in here. I'm going to go back to one thing that, um, really needs to be highlighted, and that's actually in the report, and that goes back to when you look at the Fire Department. They really had to change some of their procedures that they done. So when responding firefighter paramedics are now deploying, they're doing a two-person, um, reconnaissance team that provides the initial patient evaluation and treatment, and then they're able to get the assistance that they need. So, um, we are trying to watch what we're doing with the PPEs and obviously the council knows that we would love to know from the county, just for safety, where we're returning to a place or for responding to a place that hasn't always worked on it. We've also looked at some of our building access and egress, um, as limited as possible. We're also looking at some of the time training that we had to do with the PPEs, the donning. Um, this goes back to the, um, obviously the Fire Department. And we've also looked at how can we make the employees safer and, you know, sometimes we've been able to share some of our SCBAs. We're getting away from that, each individual, um, having maybe their own face mask, but we're trying to make sure that everything that we have, that we're able to do. We've also been, uh, following, obviously Northwest Community Hospital, um, their rules and their policies, and we've been very active with them. And we do appreciate, obviously, um, the ER folks and the nurses who've come in there and actually given some additional, um, information and given us some of their best practices, not just from IDPH, but what they actually see with some of the other, um, items to decrease our exposure. We've also made sure that we really do have in some departments, washing your hand guidelines and your facial guidelines. Um, and we're also going back to with Kelly and Wasim, um, we're leveraging the existing technology to really meet anything that we had. And I hope that everybody's gone to the website because whatever we've really sent from any of the departments or any of the thing from Cook County, we've been really trying to utilize the website for their information and, and we continue loading stuff out there. So I know that I've been really kind of doing this as briefly as I can, but also just mentioning some of the other pieces that we have. Um, we will continue doing some of the purchases that we learned about. We will continue filing, um, some of our other pieces, but again, don't want to jinx this, but some of the best practices that I briefly mentioned, we're continuing looking at our, and expanding some of our protocols. Um, and again, I really hope that we don't go back to Phase One or Phase Two, but again, if we did, we do know how remote would work a little bit differently. We do know how some of our staffing would, um, happen, but we are prepared and, um, as I said before, even in the write-up, it's unfortunate that we went through this, but, um, we're also better prepared and better monitoring some of the other pieces that we have. Um, I know that that was longer than probably I told you, Mayor, but, um, I hope that was, um, enough of information for the residents and also for the community overall businesses to understand how Rolling Meadows has dealt with COVID-19 and we continue working.
Thank you. I sure know how we're, we're cleaning for COVID and that, that's a good thing for the, the hygiene of the building. Um, consequently, I spoke with Northrop Grumman last week on Tuesday, uh, a couple stakeholders there regarding best practices and they have over 90,000 employees. Um, where they are at this point is, uh, at a level of willingness to share their best practices, not only for the city of Rolling Meadows municipal buildings, but also for other, uh, members of the business community who are looking to have their employees come back. And so in a week or so, I should be seeing this information come across my desk to share with not only the city here, but also the Chamber of Commerce who attended that conversation with me as well. Um, at this time, are there any questions, comments, or concerns from the council for Manager Crumstock? If not, thank you, Manager Crumstock, for sharing the information thus far. And then we can turn it back to Finance Director Gallagher for the new billing system update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mayor and City Council, in tonight's packet, we have a short write-up, uh, for the new billing software for utility billing. Uh, I wanted to just jump into the PowerPoint presentation, uh, tonight. I want to start, first start off and thank our entire team here at the city, uh, and also the City Council for your patience as we've gone through this. But I, I really want to specifically thank each and every person in finance and administration in our IT department to deploy software with all the other responsibilities that we have. I just really want to say a big thank you to our entire team. Uh, it took us a lot to get to this point with Tyler Software, which is a renowned municipal software company. And this is one of the modules that, uh, now is live. And we want to take tonight to highlight some of the features for the City Council, for residents, and for businesses who may be tuning in. Uh, again, we've got a PowerPoint presentation that I'll quickly go through. Uh, we have a new billing system now for utility billing. And as part of our ongoing service enhancements for the Enterprise Resource Planning software, uh, the city now is offering e-billing and also a 24/7 customer access called the Citizen Self-Service Portal, which may be found on our city's website. And as a refresher, our city utility bill is mailed out monthly, and that's for water, sewer, stormwater, and garbage. Uh, garbage includes, uh, recycling as well. And this new web-based customer service portal, uh, is making it easier for residents to enroll in the city's automatic bill pay program to pay or to also pay just a one-time payment, uh, for the utility bill. And it really is a very, uh, vast, uh, upgrade. Our old software was outdated. It was no longer being supported, um, by the company to the level that we would expect to have support. And so this, uh, entire upgrade, uh, will help the city overall and continue to grow as we need to integrate with, uh, technologies such as, uh, our phones and our iPads and other kind of mobile devices that we have. Uh, and we'll get into that in just a moment too. So there is a new utility bill that was mailed out August 1st. Uh, the city mails about, uh, 6,700 bills each month to customers. So that's residents and businesses, and each person received a, each household or business received a new city, city utility bill in the new format.
Excuse me, Director Gallagher? Are you, um, gonna have the presentation up? I don't know if maybe it's, you're not.
Oh, it's not up? I'm sorry.
No, no.
Oh, thank you for. It says screen sharing. Hold on for just a sec, let's see here.
Maybe.
So we see the summary page from your previous.
Oh, do you? Okay, so let's see here.
So close that one down. Whoop.
There we go.
There we go. Something must have just got clicked away. So the first slide, you didn't miss much. It was just an overview. So just moving on to the city's, uh, new utility billing format. Uh, we'll get into the actual look of the bill, but I just wanted to mention that I didn't look at a tally, but I think we have close to 2,000 out of the 6,700 who've actually registered their utility bill online. So you do need to create an account and we'll get into that, um, to the Citizen Self-Service Portal. So, uh, for the Mayor and City Council, just so you know, uh, that's a pretty good starting, uh, point for us, and we hope to see more folks take advantage of that online portal. Um, if you, as a customer, need some help, uh, get into that too. Give us a call, uh, at 847-394-8500. We can walk you through the portal. When customers wish to sign up for e-bills, so that's electronic delivery of the, the bill rather than receiving a paper bill, you do need to log into the Citizen Self-Service Portal. And on the homepage, uh, the page, and I'll just kind of flip over to that for a second if you'd like, so you can kind of see that. You may access the portal either through online payments. Can you see the website, Mayor? Or just the presentation?
No, I can see the website. I was muted, so I put my thumb up, but yeah.
Oh, no problem. Great, thanks. Either you can go through online payments or you may click the utility bill icon and that'll take you right to the portal. And the portal does integrate, uh, with mobile devices, so you should see the same exact information. So to access that portal, that is where you would go and head to, to register the, for the portal. Now, if folks like their paper bill, there's nothing that a resident needs to do. They'll just continue to receive their paper bill. Some people do like to have an e-bill and so that you do need to register on the portal. But again, for a lot of folks, they like the paper bill, there's nothing further and there's no charge for any type of paper bill or e-bill. So moving on to the actual city. So moving on to the actual city utility bill format. In the insert, in the utility bill, we provided an insert to show and explain the utility bill format. And the utility bill format, I kind of talked about that as a staff report. I'm not going to go through every field because it is quite detailed. But what we tried to do is put more information on the bill itself and then also be very detailed on the water usage readings. And a lot of information now is a little bit newer and right on the front of the utility bill. And if folks have questions, again, we're here to serve, so we can always field those questions. People have been emailing us and calling us, and we've been helping people with their questions about the new city utility bill format. So that was the top portion of the bill. This slide will show you the bottom half of the portion of the bill. It does have now usage history right on the face of the bill, and that bill can also be found online as well. So if someone loses their bill, they can log in. They can get a duplicate copy of their bill. And a service enhancement that we find it as customer service providers, our staff then is able to see the actual bill as though the customer would see it. So in our old system, you would just have basic information. Now we're able to see exactly what the customer is seeing. Right now, because we're not in a late payment penalty phase, we're not assessing late penalties. So that is another feature that we're able to turn that off when we mail out bills. And so that obviously would help residents right now with any late penalties. I'd just like to mention that. So a lot more detail on the bill itself. And moving on, as far as how may residents pay their utility bills? We offer a variety of options. And we consider our software safe and secure. And there are in-person and automatic payment plans. Close to 30% of our customers actually pay their bill through an automatic bill payment plan. So it's either through a checking or savings account or through a credit card monthly on the 20th of the month. Customers may also mail their check. That's very common. They mail it right to City Hall. It's within, is with their, the payment coupon gets mailed with their envelope. They may use the white drop box in City Hall parking lot with the check and payment coupon. We have in-person Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., cash, check, or credit card or debit card. We, of course, during COVID-19, were trying to not have as many folks in. So if they can choose other payment options right now, we're asking to use those kinds of payment options rather than in-person. But we do have an upgrade for our cash register. As part of our ERP process and for utility billing, we also have a new cash register. And with that new cash register, we have a new credit card reader. So now we are completely, fully in compliance, which is called PCI compliance. It's safe and secure, and we have chip-enabled card readers at the front counter. Automatic payments, as we mentioned, 20th of the month, through a checking account or savings account or credit card or debit card. And then folks can also make an online payment with a credit card or debit card. So the new feature for us is the Citizen Self-Service Portal. And again, this is where a customer would register, and they access that from our city's website. And the new Citizen Self-Service Portal does require that we have a registration. So every single utility billing account does need to register so that they can sign up for auto-payments, make a one-time pay, or to view e-bills, or even water usage history. We do have an exception for our senior citizens that, who may not have access to a computer or anyone else who may need assistance. We do have an auto-pay form at our front counter. To make it safe and secure, we want to make sure that people do request that at the front counter and show identification that they are the resident at the home. And those forms can be found at the finance front counter. We do not allow emails or faxes with confidential banking information, so it all does need to be done in person. But we want to make sure that people have that option should they not have access to mobile devices or a PC. So again, our instructions for the Citizen Self-Service Portal, and I'm just going to flip over again, if you'll allow me to do that for just a moment. And Mayor, if I can ask you, can you see the website one more time?
Sorry, couldn't unmute, but yes.
Thank you. If folks want to access the instructions, it's right from the city's website. And what we've done is created a little bit of information. We have specific walkthrough instructions with print screens. So for instance, how to create your utility billing account. If you're going to be accessing that, we have complete step-by-step instructions so that folks can go ahead and see how that is all created through the process of the Citizen Self-Service Portal. And with that being said, our IT department also then created a quick link, a YouTube video, which I'm not going to quicken it right now, but that is also accessible in case you want to view how to create an online billing account. And again, residents need to register their account to access the Citizen Self-Service Portal. And then we also have instructions on a one-time payment, how to sign up for a bank draft auto-pay, and also how to sign up for the credit card auto-pay. And going back to the presentation, again, if customers do have questions, feel free to give us a call at any time in terms of Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. A couple benefits that we want to review with the city council. And it's really important that we're now finally having e-billing because it has been such a request from our customers, our residents and our businesses. And this, of course, is at no charge. Again, if folks do not want to receive e-billing, there's nothing that anyone needs to do, so no action needed. You'll continue to receive your paper bill. Residents may sign up for auto-bill pay. Now there'll be historical information on the online portal so that residents may access it and see history, billing history, look up past bills, usage history, and also payment history. They also may make payments safely and securely at any time and in real time. So when folks do make payments, we can also view them on our side and provide by our customer service during the process. There are flexible options for finance staff for reporting and also for analysis that we do internally in terms of accounts receivable and anything to do with our audited financials or budgeting. Also, that, an additional benefit is that a resident may see their utility bill account at any time through the online service portal. And that's been one of the biggest requests that we've had from residents. So in summary, again, if residents have questions, feel free to give us a call Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and our phone number is 847-394-8500. And folks can also email us at ub@cityrm.org. It is a new billing system, and it was delayed due to COVID-19 at the request of the vendor, our ERP vendor. We're very happy with the final product. We're still also, you know, learning on a couple levels, too. But, you know, we want to provide the best customer service experience that we can. Residents have been very favorable and positive so far from the feedback. And we're very happy to be moving on to the next module. And I'm also happy to take any questions at this point in time.
Thank you, Director Gallagher. That reminds me, my bill is due on the 20th, and I will be signing up for the auto draft, so I don't have to worry about it anymore. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns from the council on this by show of hand? If not, thank you for the presentation and the wonderful supporting information. I cannot wait till all of these facets are worked out and we can see our ERP system come to some sort of finality. I know it's still a long ways away, but these incremental steps are very promising. So thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor.
This brings us on to the next item, which is the business licenses and registrations. For this, will it be Rob, Director Horn, or Assistant Director Charlton? Who's going to handle this?
Thank you, Mayor. I would love for it to be Assistant Director Charlton. Unfortunately, that, this item is one that she prepared, and she was called away unexpectedly this week. And I didn't have a lot of time to bring myself up to speed. So I will, I think, I know from helping review the item that this is provided for the council's information only, so I will provide a brief overview and then take any questions the council may have. The business license item, I believe this originally came up to give the council some information as to why we take business licenses and to see if staff is taking a look at how the fee structure is established and how those fees, how those licenses are renewed year over year. So there are three primary reasons a business license is taken in the city. The first reason is to get primary ownership contact information, not only for city business, but also for emergency purposes and emergency services. The other reason is to leverage a process or a renewal or some sort of violation in the event that a business owner has become delinquent in, like, say, a water bill or a tax bill or a variety of other city services that are not specific to community development. This, this item is really, this license item is really an opportunity for all city departments to ensure that any outstanding items get rectified and they don't linger for longer than a year. It's just an item that is administered through community development. The other item that is really critical is during the business license review, when someone applies for a new business license, we need to ensure that it's zoned properly or the building use is appropriate to the business use. For example, we have certain home occupations that are not legal. We want to take that opportunity to review to see if the person proposing the business is permitted or somebody who has a high-hazard use business doesn't try to move into a low-hazard construction building. So that gives us our opportunity to look at those things. The license is a license that's issued on a calendar year basis. We do prorate the fee based on when the person comes in. The license goes from January 1 to December 31st. City staff sends out a letter about October 1st of every year, giving business owners three months to get their business license renewed. At that time, if it is not renewed, there is a 100% penalty fee. As I'll go into further, the fee schedule for the business licenses and registration is extremely antiquated and outdated. None of our staff like it. We were in the process of reviewing that prior to the COVID incident with our ERP vendor, Tyler Munus. But obviously, that project got put on hold in late March. So we will revisit that item. We certainly want to consolidate the fees. I think right now there's over 100 different fees, and many of them are the exact same cost. So we certainly want to consolidate those fees and put a premium on those high-use, high-impact businesses that cause a greater impact to our residents or our city services. Again, and at that time, we do want to look at the potential for a graduated penalty fee for late businesses. And we also want to look at an opportunity to incorporate some sort of reward system where as if a business doesn't, or complies and doesn't have any violations year over year, well, there's some sort of benefit to their renewal, whether it be a percentage of their fee taken off or whatever have you. We want to look into that. But again, a lot of the fee review, we need to do in conjunction with the ERP process because we learned the hard way last year when we started redeveloping a lot of our forms, that we were doing a lot of work that wasn't going to work with the new system. So we put the brakes on that, and we're trying to do it in conjunction with the ERP discussions. So other than that, you know, right now, what is the license and renewals? What is the other item? Our fire department currently has a, I don't know, I believe he works for a neighboring fire department, and he does inspections annually on a certain percentage of businesses. I don't know if the fire chief is on. He can maybe explain that a little further. But again, part of the fee that we collect goes to pay for those inspections that are, there's an attempt at least to do as many inspections annually as possible. But obviously, only working two days a week for the city, that limits his availability. So that's a brief snapshot into our business license and registration. There's going to be a lot of changes with this, with the ERP system. It will include a web-based portal for business owners to basically issue their own license if it's a renewal. They'll get an email. They'll be able to pay. I think, I might be misspeaking, but I think they may be able to pay by credit card online. It can be issued online, and they can print it out right there. So obviously, there's a lot of work that's going to go into developing that. But we're all very excited about what possibilities the new software will hold as far as business license registrations. So I'm happy to take any questions right now from the council, if there are any.
Thank you, Director Horn. Appreciate you filling in here for Assistant Director Charlton. I do see a show of hands, and we'll start with Alderman Bud Matts, then O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No questions, just a comment. When I get my annual business license renewal in Schaumburg, included with the business license renewal is a checkoff for the Chamber of Commerce. And you have to physically uncheck if you want to be a member of the Chamber of Commerce. They include that fee with their bill so that they build up their Chamber of Commerce and business participation with the Chamber. I'm just thinking that might be something we want to consider doing in the future. And I can provide you a copy of that if you wish.
That would be fine, Alderman Bud Matts. I believe, if I'm not.
Rob, before you get too far, we've had past discussions about that, Alderman Bud Matts. And the council at that point in time said it should be a standalone. They need to do their own. But if the council wants to have more discussion about that, we can have it. But again, the direction was they should be on their own. They should be standalone, and so.
Now is not the time for legacy information like that. Continue, Director Horn.
I was just going to say that I believe the Village of Schaumburg uses Munus software as well. So we certainly can reach out to them to see what that looks like when we're developing the software.
Thank you, Director.
Anything further, Alderman Bud Matts?
Nope, I yield my time. Thanks.
No problem. Alderman O'Brien?
Great, thanks, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I appreciate that, Alderman Bud Matts, and Barry, or Manager Crumstock, some of the background you could give, because some of us that haven't been on council for a while, I do appreciate any historical information that can be shared. So I appreciate that. And Director Horn, this might be a question for you, or maybe it's even for Business Advocate Martha. Is, do we have like a follow-up process? Just, I guess where I'm going is at the EDC, we'll get updates of business renewals that are literally, they don't show as new business or just late renewals. And it does seem like there's a fair amount. But I think you might have answered the question. The long term is it's all through ERP. Automated is the ideal state. But do we have a type of follow-up program? Like if we send something out, I'm guessing it's snail mail, October 1st. Since I believe we do collect, or we try and collect email addresses for every business as they come online, like, do we shoot out a reminder November 1st and say, hey, get this in? And then if they don't, we send out an email on December 1st and say, hey, 31 more days to get this in, otherwise your fee. Otherwise your fee, I guess is one more type of follow-up process we have.
Yeah, right, right now we do a follow, we do do a follow-up, but it is, it is a laborious process. And we just, we, we have redone the, the previous applications did not have an email address. So we have revised the applications. We are making a concerted effort to build a database of email addresses so we can start sending those mass emails out. But right now we're, you know, we're not using the email address in the way that you're, you're suggesting at this point. The, the new application, like I said, was I believe started as part of the ERP implementation that began, I believe it was the end of last year. Discussions on, because there were some certain applications they wanted to get a feel for. And I believe business licenses was one of them.
Great. Thanks so much. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Bud Matts, your hand is either still up from before or you have additional information, questions, comments? Nothing? All right. Any further questions, comments or concerns from the council? And if not, then we can go ahead and move forward on the next item beyond the business license registration to the tree preservation ordinance. Now, Director Horn, I know this is, is yours, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. Was Alderman Bud Matts going to join in this conversation or is this specifically on you?
Alderman Bud Matts did bring it up. I'm happy to give him the floor if he'd like to discuss what initiated this, but otherwise I'm ready to go.
If you'd be so kind as to go ahead, Rob, and I can just add a comment or two afterwards. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. So I was, I was looking at the information that I wanted to present to council tonight. And obviously this item was brought to city council as a result of, I won't say as a, as a result, but concerns brought up to an alderman about residents removing, residents and builders and developers removing trees from a site without any real requirements established as to replacing those trees or, or any kind of replacement efforts or donations to the city at all that, so that city could donate us, excuse me, so the city could replant and build up its, its forestry canopy. And, and as I was putting notes down on this item, there, there's a lot, a lot of things we can discuss and we will. But, but the issue ultimately comes down to one, one reality that, that is ultimately a policy decision by the council and, and the, the issue really lies with whether we are okay or whether the council feels comfortable restricting what a resident can do on their property with, with their, their tree, their trees. Homeowners get very protective of that, of their property and what they can do on that. But again, you know, a lot of communities look at trees not from the perspective of landscaping, but from the perspective of community asset. So as we go through this item, I would, I would call your attention or the council's attention to that one ultimate kind of overarching criteria as to whether, whether we want to regulate what a resident wants to do on their private property. I know in discussing this internally at our supervisors meeting, we hold weekly, it got very contentious and there was very strong opinions on both sides. So it was about a 50-50 split as far as what, what they thought or what our supervisors thought the community should have or what we should do in that regard. So the, the reality is trees, trees provide a great benefit to any community. They enhance its, its character, they, they improve property values. They provide a great energy savings for, for homes. There, there's so many positive benefits to a heavily wooded forestry canopy in a community. A, a great example of that is, you know, if you drive through any North Shore community or any community that has significant tree protection regulations, you're going to see the property values in that community are higher. Based on some of my research, anywhere from 10 to 20%. The common thought process is about 15% increase in property value just based on the protection of and, and preservation of trees. But then as we discussed, there, there are definitely negative aspects to that, right? Overreaching government, people, you know, don't want the government telling them what they can do with their trees. We have, you know, many longtime residents in the city of Rolling Meadows. It is not rare that a resident that planted a tree 30 years ago wants to cut it down and they're the ones who planted the tree. The, the, one of the factors that we always think of on the, on the regulatory side is, you know, these are decisions being made by a homeowner at one moment in time. So homeowners don't live in the house forever. A tree could live 100 years and go through 20 different residents. Well, if one person cuts that tree down, every resident in the future doesn't get the benefit of that tree. The other can, the other negative that comes with a tree preservation ordinance is it general, it, it can sometimes be seen as red tape to development or red tape to building permits. For example, you, as a city, we could develop a tree preservation ordinance that simply looked at restricting people from cutting down trees. Okay. Which is one kind of, kind of phase of a tree preservation ordinance. But it could also be that we regulate how, how close you can come to a tree before you excavate or whether you can put soil or anything on top of the ground within the drip line of a tree. Most forestry experts would tell you that that damages the health of a tree because the tree roots that provide nutrients to a tree are usually within the first four inches of soil. Something covers that up and it suffocates the tree's ability to bring in nutrients. So again, a tree preservation ordinance could be as small or as large as we want it. I think it's important for the city council at, at this point during the discussion process is to really get a feel for what we're hoping to get out of this tree preservation ordinance, what we want to achieve. And then if there is decoration, excuse me, decoration, a direction by the city council to go and investigate a tree preservation ordinance, what it would take to staff and what it would take to enforce and what the fees potentially could be and things like that. Then we can have an idea of where to, to put our efforts into that. So I think it might be good to, to start, you know, answer questions on this and get an idea of how the council feels about the whole idea of tree preservation. Additionally, I attached, I believe it was from 2014, the full agenda item that was discussed previously. And I think based on the information I read was a similar request brought to staff where they actually did investigate some bullet points from area communities that had tree preservation ordinances. So, you know, I, I think it'd be good if I stopped right there and, and allowed the council an opportunity to discuss and, and ask questions. And then I'm happy to continue on if there's, if there's additional information needed.
Thank you, Director Horn. You know, I, I guess I would like to start with some questions myself. One, I'm a fan of trees, not necessarily the fan of the sap that they drop on my car or my house, but I love being surrounded by trees. But what, what, what is the catalyst for this conversation? So are, have we recognized that we have a shortage of trees? Or do we have this uptick in residents chopping trees down? Where is this coming from? Where is this conversation coming from?
I, I think, you know, I, I think it might be best, I don't want to put Alderman Bud Matts on the spot, but I think this was brought, this was made a, an item to discuss because of a resident that brought an item to him regarding why the city didn't have a tree preservation ordinance. Because I believe someone near his house or near his neighborhood did remove a bunch of trees. And I don't think there was anything the city had as far as an enforcement tool to, to stop that from occurring. So I, I would defer to Alderman Bud Matts if that's okay.
No, that's great. So is this an opportunity, are we looking at this an opportunity to get ahead of something? Like do we foresee that residents are going to be felling numerous trees throughout the community? Alderman Bud Matts, can you help me understand a little bit more so we can get the ordinance right?
Yeah, yeah. So let me give you a little bit of background. I want to say maybe three, four years ago, a large lot in my ward had a number of mature trees, 100-year-old plus trees on it. And then on one particular weekend, a developer went through and cut down a significant number of those trees, much to the dismay of, of the neighbors in that community. And it created actually newsworthy type reactions. So at that point, it, it, it kind of started. And I personally don't have a dog in this fight usually, unless of course the trees are on my property. But, but I will say that in, in reading up for this particular item that I do know is that a number of communities that have had this preservation ordinance put in place have been able to tailor the ordinance based on the tree size. And so that what ends up happening is, is that the oldest and the maturest of the trees that are in good condition that, you know, that, you know, 50, 50 to 100-year-old trees that, that provide value to probably to more than one property owner because their drip line is over several properties. Those, those kinds of trees, I think are what the, the goal of many people who are in favor of this are about saving and, and producing and not, I don't think that, you know, it's, this is not about, you know, some guy who wants to cut down, you know, half a dozen small trees on his property that are probably more than overgrown bushes anyway. This is about saving, you know, 100-year-old oak trees type thing. And so one resident in my ward asked me to bring this to the, to the council, which is why it's here before you. But I will say that in talking with the city's arborist to try to get some background information on this, he did say that, that there are some communities that have done a good job with this. He recommended that we look at the Park Ridge ordinance and that how they've written theirs. And he said that, that, you know, we don't have to be completely restrictive and that we have to be thoughtful and that there is a benefit by, by looking at it. And he says our, our particular code regarding trees is, hasn't been upgraded in a long time. And, and that it could use some tweaking and those were his words. And so seeing that he's the expert that we call on, I'm going to just take him at his word that there's some, there is some benefit to looking at this. So, but that's, that's the long and the short of what I can give you for background.
Thank you. No, and that's a good point. As ordinance is mature, we should regularly review them and make sure they're still aligned with where we are as a community or where we're going. My trepidation is that we just, that we get it right if we're going to do, do, if we're going to explore an ordinance, a tree preservation ordinance, that, that we take our time, do it with thought and model the other communities. Like in your words, that got it right. Because I, I don't know that we have a problem yet. I don't want us to have a problem with, you know, losing trees that are alarming rate here in the community. But I just want to make sure we're looking at it through the right lens and going to take the appropriate steps in the right amount of time. Alderman O'Brien?
Great. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I guess just one question and one comment. And then Director Horn, you can probably confirm this for us. In the write-up, I know it went back to Ms. Danner and things like that. The comparison, because I know most of them weren't in adjacent properties. Most of it was Northbrook in the write-up. I think it was the Highland Parks that you referenced. Is that from 2014? There was no current research that you did. I just wanted to clarify that. So if we were to do this, like Arlington might have one now, Schaumburg could have one, Palatine could have one. If we're going to mirror something that the reference municipalities were from 2014, is that correct?
Yes, that, that, I just put that entirely. I, I felt I needed to attach something.
No, no, that's perfect. I just wanted to make sure I was reading it right. Is there wasn't a current assessment that was done until you got direction from us? And then this one's more the comment too. And I'll rely on my previous partner in crime, Alderman Bessesi. When we were on the Planning, Zoning Commission, I do remember this situation that Alderman Bud Matts brought up. It took a lot of folks by shock. I think the planning and zoning looks at that when a variance or a special use permit comes before them. Because I do remember, now obviously ultimately it comes to us as the city of council to approve anything that goes through the planning and zoning. But Alderman Bessesi, are you remembering correctly that, or am I remembering correctly that that was part of the planning and zoning? There's been some changeover on that since we were members, but that was something PZ looked at if it was a larger scale development. That, that's just more of a comment, I guess, out of Alderman Bessesi's anything to do. But I think we do capture non-official ordinance, but it is generally something that planning and zoning looks at also.
I, I will say, Alderman O'Brien, that, that development occurred just before I started. So I heard a lot about it. I, I will tell you, one of, one of the issues is the planning and zoning, and Alderman Bessesi can correct me if I'm wrong. The Planning and Zoning Commission looks at what is proposed in the future. So what a tree preservation ordinance would do likely in this scenario, if we had a preservation ordinance prior to the development of that site, is it would have required a tree survey of the property prior to development. And staff would have had the latitude to require the developer to develop the property in a way that ensured preservation of as much of the trees as possible as opposed to just clearcutting the site and putting a detention area on the far end. If I remember correctly, a, a lot of the trees that were high quality were the back, I'm sorry, can't get my north and south, I believe northwest corner of the property and very little grading occurred there. Most of the heavy grading took place at the southwest or the, excuse me, the northeast corner of the site. So a tree preservation ordinance would give us some latitude at the front end of a development. And, and if a developer needed to remove a bunch of, say, you know, 100-year oaks or whatever the case was, we would have language in the ordinance that would require them to post a, a significant deposit to ensure maybe not equal, but some sort of replanting for the entire community. The example I gave in the write-up is, is very common. I think each property in that development, there were four homes, that developer cut all those trees down and only had to plant two, I think two and a half caliber inch trees on each site. So if we're comparing inch per inch, they probably cut down, they probably had to replant one tree's worth of inches as opposed to, you know, I don't even know how many, probably hundreds of inches of trees. And the community I came from had a very robust tree preservation ordinance. I, I think almost too, too robust. But yeah, that, that was a, a big deal is, is residents or developers would have to post, you know, several thousand dollars in bonds, a cash deposit. And if good forestry practices didn't allow them to replant those inches on their own site, there was an account established for the city. And when they were replanting on public land, they would use that money to repopulate it with, with trees. So.
Great. Thank you. So the plans we did see at the time, that was just the goodwill nature of the developer that had it marked that they were going to save these trees or replace. There wasn't a requirement in our It wasn't a requirement on our side. Thank you. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Thank you, Director Horn, for, for that. I do see Alderman Sanoyka's hand is up. Floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, um, I do want to start off by saying that natural resources have value. Um, and for us to easily and quickly communicate that value, we need to quantify that value as a community. So in preparation for tonight, um, I reviewed some of the forestry policies enforced by the City of Highland Park and Park Ridge. And I think a tree preservation ordinance is one avenue that we can pursue as a community to assign the value of mature canopy in our neighborhoods. A preservation ordinance does not prohibit tree cutting, but it does assign a monetary value that allows for canopy to play into a developer's plans in a way that recaptures value that is at this time lost without a defined policy. At this time, I'm absolutely in favor of revisiting the section of our code to recapture that value. The city already has a section of code that regulates lawn grass length and how many dogs a homeowner can keep. So to say that the city is over, overreaching, uh, by considering this policy is perhaps premature. I would however, recommend that this item be referred to our environmental committee, which consists of all resident volunteers in the City of Rolling Meadows. Since it, it appears that Director Horn mentioned that his staff's trepidations is mostly, uh, related to resident buy-in than anything else. So I think having this particular committee of residents review this policy would probably be, um, a, a really good start to get a pulse on, on the community's, on the community's buy-in for a policy like this. But a, as it stands, I think this is definitely worth exploring.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. Uh, anything further before I allow Alderman Cannon take the floor?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Cannon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just a couple of thoughts. I guess, um, you know, knowing the situation happened over Mr. Budwatt's, Matt's ward was, uh, unfortunate to say the least, but I, I do worry about us overreaching on some of this stuff. You know, I will use the example of a homeowner who might be wanting to remodel his house or put a new patio in the backyard and all of a sudden he has to replace a tree, even though he planted it originally. And now the city's going to come in and tell him, it doesn't make any difference. We're going to make you put another one up somewhere else. I just worry about us getting too detailed with this and, and too, uh, too into it, I guess. I guess the irony in my ward is that, uh, the two biggest violators, not, not from a legal standpoint, but the city had to come in on my block and knocked down a lot of trees because they were failing. And I don't mean that as a slam towards the city. They had to do it. But I, I kind of ironic, um, on Euclid Avenue between Quentin going east down to Salt Creek. At one time, that stretch of land had about fifteen trees. And this, the county never took care of them. And in the last five or six years, every one of them has died and gone away and none of them have been replaced, not even one. There is one still standing and it's been dead for about three years. So, um, again, I, I understand where we're coming from in this and I'm, I would support part of it. But I would just ask, we don't get too carried away and become, you know, look over everybody's shoulder for even something that's small. Um, I think a lot of homeowners, I know in my, in my subdivision, even though it's twenty-five years old, most of us planted our own trees here. And, uh, I guess I wouldn't want to be told that I could or couldn't take one down. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Alderman Cannon. Alderman O'Brien?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Uh, that Alderman Cannon's, uh, comments made me think of something that I'm working closely with Director Horn on as we speak. Don't necessarily need an answer now, but just something that I am in support of pursuing and taking a look at this and getting some resident feedback. I guess one question I would have for maybe some additional research, like we're working with now Director Horn with ComEd and the city and trees that have to be cut from power lines, some that may have to be completely removed. Just how does that figure it? I don't expect you to know the answer now. But some of the, during our research is if ComEd comes into somebody's backyard and says, well, this tree's got to go. Does ComEd pay? Does the resident pay? Does the city absorb it? So it's something that happens to be something Director Horn and I talked today on, um, in real life or in our current situation, it's something that to address as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Veneziano?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, um, I am in support of getting more information on this and, and definitely working on revisiting this ordinance. Because, you know, as we've stated, it's, it's in need of re, being addressed. And, and, um, I agree that I, I don't want to over, overstep. But I, I do agree that we do need to reevaluate it, um, especially with developers. You know, with the big development that's, you know, in our, in my ward. If there were trees in there that we could have saved simply by having this ordinance redone, that would have been beneficial. You know, to the, the new development that's going in, you know, and then obviously to, you know, what we consider our downtown of, you know, Kirchhoff Road. So it's definitely something I'm in support of, uh, looking further into and, and exploring our options. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Veneziano. Alderman Diastis?
Thank you. I agree with, uh, Alderman Veneziano that we should revisit the ordinance and that we should not overstep our boundaries. As a property owner, and I've lived in my house and I own my house. If I planted a tree and I deem it needs to go, that needs to be my decision. I think if we're talking about major developments, um, I would agree with Ms. Veneziano. Yes, we should have something in there in terms of, uh, business developments. But if I put a, a willow tree in my backyard thirty years ago and the roots are overgrowing and it's, it's interfering with the pipes that I've got, it's up to me to take it out. Uh, and I would, I guess that I'm in, in favor of reviewing it, but I am not in favor of the city telling me I can or cannot, uh, put in a tree or remove a tree. That's got to be my decision. It's my property. And I think most of the property owners, uh, are, are going to agree with it. They're going to say, yes, we need to have, uh, an ordinance there, but not so much that they can tell, that government can tell me what I can or cannot do. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Diastis. Alderman Bessesi?
So I'll make it a clean sweep. The, I, I'm, I would be in favor of, of looking into it. Uh, however, I do agree with, uh, Alderman Diastis that really should be, you know, when, when it comes to the homeowner, you know, if it's, if it's, uh, you know, they got a tree that's causing a problem or they need to take one tree down. I think that should be their decision. As far as, you know, developers coming in and clearing a lot, that's a different story. There needs to be a plan for, uh, a, a new landscaping plan for that development, uh, that would be acceptable. I know we've done that in the planning and zoning in the past. But I would be in favor of looking into it and just kind of seeing what some of our other cities are doing. But at the same time, I don't believe we should be restricting our residents from, you know, if they want to take a tree down or they want to take a tree down and then put another tree up at a different spot. I, I don't think we have any business really getting in, involved with that. It may be different if they have, you know, four trees on their lot and they're taking them all down. Difference, might be a different story, but I think it's worth a discussion. So thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Bessesi. Alderman Veneziano?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I apologize. I had a question for Director Horn. Do we currently in, in the ordinance that we have or in any of our ordinances, to where, uh, a resident has like on a, on their easement or their property line where you can't plant a tree X feet, you know, to the property line or the easement or anything of those natures, like you do a fence or a shed or anything along those kind of lines?
I, I don't believe we have anything on, uh, in the ordinance other than the fact that you obviously would, would have to be entirely on your own property. But that's a property rights issue, um, that would handle, be handled civilly, um, or through a civil court. I don't, I don't believe we have anything on the books regarding that.
Okay. Thank you. So I guess maybe, you know, adding is moving forward with this is maybe that is something, you know, I, I agree. You know, I have a huge tree in my backyard that may have to come out that our family planted forty years ago because it's incumbent on my patio in my house. But at the same time, maybe that's something we need to look at is that, okay, if it's, you know, affecting the neighbor and because it's, you know, five feet from the easement, maybe that's something we play into it because it doesn't just affect you, it affects your neighbors, you know, involved. You know, so I'm all about, you know, it's your property, it's your decision. And, and, and I'm just throwing ideas out there for discussion is how do we, you know, if it does affect neighbors, how do we, um, respect our neighbors at the same time? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Alderman Veneziano. The, just because you started being more descriptive at the end, I just want to make sure I'm clear. We do have certain, um, language and authority that if a tree, um, is in declining health and, and presents, uh, potential concerns for a neighboring property, we can, um, issue a order. I guess it's an, a request for the resident to remove their tree and, and that goes through the violation process. However, um, because of the time and money it takes to remove a tree, we usually have to give residents a, a significant amount of time. But, um, for example, if your neighbor or the tree you talk about is on your property, but it, it's leaning towards your neighbor's house and that it's declining in health. And they complain to the city, uh, you might get a, a letter from us saying, we've been out, we've inspected the tree. It looks like it's going to, uh, cause potential dame, damage to your neighbor's property. We do have code language that helps us enforce those issues.
Thank you for that clarification. Nothing further right now.
Thank you, Alderman Veneziano. Before then, uh, taking a straw vote for, uh, pursuing this ordinance, we do have a member of the public who would like to speak. And so I'd like them to share their opinions before we take that straw vote. And of course, refine the conversation in additional direction for you, Director Horn and staff. So at this time, I do have Christine Gabe, if you're on the line.
Hi.
Press star six or unmute. So.
What do I do? Hi, am I there?
You're good. Yep.
Thanks. Um, I, um, am Christine Gabe and I'm in Alderman Budmats Board. And I was, uh, subject to the tree destruction right behind me that took place a few years ago when the development started on Fairfax. And it, it all occurred on a Saturday when Public Works was closed. And I, there was a whole big scuttle about it in the neighborhood. It was a very, very bad scene. Lots and lots of excellent oak trees, willow trees and others were completely wiped out. It was really out any consideration for the rest of the neighborhood. And I guess that is where I'm coming from. We bought here twenty-five years ago and we're basically in a woodland. And certainly progress comes along and we understand that. But it, the, the kind of destruction that took place there not only hasn't, has, you know, the developer to consider, but the neighbors and what happens to their property value. We were a bit lucky. Some of the border trees along the back end of that lot, which is where our house is located, were, are still there. Our neighbors next door have no screen whatsoever between themselves in now this very, very large brick home. They look onto the fellow's deck. He looks into their windows. And, you know, he continues to take more trees down after the trees that were taken down by the developer, you know, he, I don't know if he doesn't like trees or whatever. But the point here is that it's, it's important to consider the homeowner and their property. But what about the impact that it has on the neighbors? There are some times when a large tree or several large trees are what gives your property value. In the case of our neighbors as an example, they didn't take down the trees, but there's no, no question that that's going to be a mitigating condition if they would want to sell their home. So I am, am here to, to say, I guess, that I think it's time for Rolling Meadows to investigate this, to look carefully into it. We are, after all, the city of trees. And I think if we want to hold on to that title, it's important for us to protect our trees, protect what we have and actually make it a city of trees. And, um, yeah. Yeah. In, in, yeah, in addition to obvious, the obvious things about trees. I mean, the, the environment, the, the animals, the, the habitat that we maintain and the, and so on. So, um, that is all I have to say. Thank you for listening.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. It's, it's good to get resident perspective. And, you know, even with COVID-19 today and the individual rights do have to be put in perspective to the greater good of society. And in this case with trees, um, it's important that we as homeowners, individuals of our property and domains, we, we do have rights, but we, we do have to be considerate of, of the existing neighborhood that we live in. So with this, what I would like to do is get first a straw vote going to demonstrate that there is a desire to explore, uh, these ordinances. And then we'll, we'll get into refining them as they come through. So all those in favor of exploring this tree preservation ordinance, please show your hands. And to be clear, I have Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Budmats, Alderman Sanoyka, Alderman Veneziano, Alderman Ken, Alderman Bessesi and Alderman Diastis. It's unanimous. And so that's a good thing. It is about time that we do explore those ordinance. Now, Director Horn, I guess just a couple of quick questions here. Is staff going to bring us, uh, a menu of, of ordinances from different communities? Or how, what's the process that you were thinking or would like to think to bring this back to, to our community and what we should do going forward?
Well, a couple of thoughts, um, running through my head, Mayor. The, the first thought is I, I would like to talk to staff about this. You know, it, as I said, I mean, the, the information that the council gave was, was very good and, and helped, helped draw a path for what the priorities are. But we have to make sure we do a thorough job. And it, it may take a little time to get this done, so I, I wouldn't want to commit it to be brought back very quickly. My, my initial thought is to present, um, almost like a kaleidoscope of different regulations that other communities enforce and regulate to see which ones the council's in favor of and which ones they're not. Um, and see how we could craft, uh, an ordinance, at least a, a, some sort of framework from that discussion. But we certainly would have, uh, the, um, communities that we used as reference, as exhibits to that and, and probably highlight areas that, um, uh, we used as, uh, you know, to not reinvent the wheel as, as a template for the new, uh, the cities, what we would propose for the city.
Yeah. And, and while that's going on, do you, it, I hope it wouldn't be too much to ask that this topic does get passed to the environmental committee so we can get the resident perspective from those that are involved in that committee and maybe bring some of that information back at the same time that staff, uh, brings the other ordinances from other communities. Manager Crumstock, I see your hands up.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. And actually just, um, mentioning what you sort of mentioned too. But I did like that word that you used kaleidoscope, uh, there, Rob. But at the same point in time, I think it's important to get all the different, uh, ordinances. Look at some of the mature ones. I know as I talked to Alderman Budmats, you know, obviously when Lake Forest went through this with the Mr. T item, they've actually revised their ordinance over time. So we need to take a conscious look at what our neighbors are doing, but also do ask environmental committee. We should also reach out to some other arborists and see if they have some ideas and concerns. But it's going to take a little time for it to come in there. But I think at the end of the day, when you see the draft ordinance that comes in there, it's going to take some time, but it's got a lot maturity, um, that we can. time, but it's got a lot maturity that we can bring into it if we do it slow and easy. But at the same point in time, we can't also wait too long because again, another growth section in spring will be there too. So I just wanted to reiterate what you said is that it has to really run in parallel programs so everybody sees some of the pieces, but also getting as much information as we can get. Cause sometimes even other arborists or other tree specialists might have some other best practices that might be out there.
Okay, thank you, Manager Crumstock. So then with this, Director Horn, do you think that then from this point forward via email, you can keep the council up to date on the progress of defining or identifying the local ordinance, ordinances from other communities and just keep us up to speed as to how, how soon we can anticipate seeing this come back before the council? So we can keep that timeline in line with the environmental committee who's massaging this from the residents' perspective?
Sure. Okay. I, I, we can do that. As I said, I can certainly provide the council an update in the very near future, once I've had an opportunity to talk about it with, with staff. I know we have two extremely important items that are coming up on committee of the whole agendas in the near future that, that I believe at least would be, would be high precedent with the city council, but certainly would, would try and, and get something drafted before the end of the year for the council to review.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Veniziano, something left on this topic here?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to reiterate at least my feelings on this, since it seems like we're going to be kind of redrafting this ordinance kind of from scratch. I am very much like our G, G1 license, you know, it took us multiple conversations and I feel like months and months and months of conversations. I am not opposed to that and I would hope, you know, we want to do this right and if that's what it takes, I'm not opposed to that to get it right from, you know, the beginning. So I just want to put that out there and, and that I would expect that it would take some time to get that done. And so I don't want you to feel, Director Horn, too much pressure that it's got to be, you know, the next two committees, the whole, as far as I'm concerned, I want to, you know, I anticipate this having multiple conversations to get this done the proper way.
I'm very appreciative of that comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Veniziano. Any other comments, questions or concerns on this topic before we move on to the property maintenance code compliance? And I believe that's back to you as well, Director Horn.
Yes, Mayor. Again, this was a item that was going to be presented by Assistant Director Charlton with, but luckily for me, I have the assistance of our, of our head of the division, the superintendent, Superintendent Wenzel will be here to answer any questions the council might have specifically. Again, I think this was an item simply provided to city council for their information. I know that it's been part of our regular conversations and, and staff hears very regularly from all of the elected officials as well as residents and business owners regarding property maintenance concerns. This was just an opportunity to explain to the council some of the challenges we've, we've faced this year as a result of the COVID issue, as well as to give the council an understanding of what the process is to go through a property maintenance complaint and, and to achieve compliance, we do have to kind of go through that long process or what generally ends up happening is if the judge or adjudicator believes that we haven't given the petitioner or the, the violator, if you will, or the homeowner a sufficient enough time to remedy their problem, it gets delayed again and sometimes can take several months longer than it would have had we just followed the normal process. So just, just briefly, our property maintenance, I ran some numbers for this report after, of course, after the report, just to get an idea, we're, we're up about 100 violations through 2020 over 2019. That's obviously a result of, of what's going on in, in the city right now for a variety of reasons. But, you know, I've been very happy and hopefully the council has as well as far as our ability to, to follow up on these items. Our staff has done a great job at, at shifting our focus from what it has historically been. I think you can look at previous years adjudication schedules and you just see, you know, address after address after address of homeowner properties going to adjudication. We've really tried to limit that. We only use adjudication as a last ditch effort to get compliance. Our goal is to work with residents. We, we try to be reasonable and human about this. Residents have, are going through life struggles just like everybody else. And so we really try to work with them to achieve compliance. That's the goal is to achieve compliance. That said, when someone does issue a, when somebody does report a violation, we do have to give the resident usually a two week time limit to get that violation remedied. It's our policy, again, since our, since our priority is compliance, that if they don't meet that deadline, we give them another week as a final deadline. Once that happens, if it's still not completed, we do reach out one more time for an in-person visit. If they're unavailable or they're non-responsive, then we of course have to issue an adjudication. They get an adjudication letter and, and obviously the city holds adjudication hearings once a month at the city hall. And, and at that time, the adjudicator, not the city, the adjudicator makes a ruling on the violation and whether the resident has to pay, whether they have to correct the problem immediately or whatever the case might be. So, you know, right, right now, as I said before, I, I don't know that anybody specifically requested this information. I think it was just some direction from city manager, given the number of violations and follow-up emails that staff receives on a regular basis related to property maintenance violations and code enforcement issues. We wanted to give the council a snapshot as to what it takes to get, to get compliance and what we try to do to help the resident before we, we use our, our more stringent tools in the toolbox. So again, I, I, I tried to brush up on this as best I could with, with a little warning, but we're happy to answer any questions you might have regarding the information that was provided and, and provide a follow-up information the council might have.
Thank you, Director Horn. I do see that Alderman Budmats has his hand up here, so we'll start with Alderman Budmats and go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of questions actually. Um, one of the things here in this report says there's a cost of $150 per cutting. Is that, is that the cost the city charges or is that the cost that the city incurs? And is that per property or is that for all of the properties that are listed there?
Thank you, Alderman Budmats. Superintendent Wenzel provided me, luckily I caught his email this, this evening and he, he can certainly step in if I get this information correct, but the $150 fee is a one-time fee for the first cut because generally by the time we have to contract out that cut, it has been over a month of growth. And so it's usually a harder cut. So those, those properties that are listed were cut once at $150, but every follow-up cut, and I believe, Don will correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it's every two weeks and at that cut, it's $40 per cut. Obviously that number can go up or down slightly based on the size of the lot, but generally it's $40. Most lots in the community are pretty consistent in size.
Okay, thank you. And then also, I mean, with ERP, is this going to be the kind of thing where if a resident makes a complaint about a neighboring property where they would be able to look and see if there's an outstanding violation that's unmet on a neighboring property so that they would be aware of if their, if their complaint is being acted upon or is in process or not?
I, I know if someone calls in on a, on a, the web-based, the Civic Plus portal on our website, that there are automatic follow-up emails sent. Don has been our subject matter expert for ERP. I don't know if you have an answer to that, Don, or?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So with ERP, each complaint will be taken as a separate complaint and unless the same complainant is making the complaint, they will not be able to see if their neighbors had complained or whatever. Many of the complaints that we get, the people want to be anonymous of their complaints. So at, you know, at this point with what we're, you know, going to be having at our disposal for use as far as the online tool, we, as, you know, staff will be able to see it, but not to complain.
Yeah, and we'll, and I'll look into that, Alderman Budmats, because I know that that's a, a solution that is provided as part of the permitting process, that a applicant can see the status of their plan review. So I'm, I'm hoping that function may be available and we just maybe haven't gotten to it as part of the implementation.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman Budmats. Alderman O'Brien?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. No, first, first of all, I was, I had a similar question to Alderman Budmats that I talked with Rob about today is it was, my concern was that at least the city was covering their costs to recoup any costs, that it was at least a net neutral charge. And regrettably, obviously I did learn if it does go the whole lean process, we do recoup our costs, it's just that it's taken care of. So just, I appreciate Don, Rob, yourself taking the time tonight because I can only imagine how many you get to the website because I know I've reached out to you probably one or two times each week over the last several weeks, given the, the current situation here. So it's been helpful from that perspective because then we can knowledgeably talk to the residents, call on us with the concerns, is that is a legal process that they have to go through in terms of a notification, the 14 days, the 21. So you taking the time tonight as well as the, the individual educational opportunity you've both given me over the last several weeks. I do appreciate, because just the back of the envelope numbers that I have here, it's been about a 30% increase between 2019 to where we're at today. So clearly that's rather great information in the, in the whole.
Well, I, I do appreciate the compliment, but I, I will tell you that all the compliments should go to Don and his team because when you guys email me one, I just hit forward and done, that's it. So, thank you.
Anything further from the council on this? Thanks, Alderman O'Brien, for your comments or remarks, questions. Waiting to see a show of hands if there's anything further. If not, then I think we can move on to the final topic, which is the Business and Temporary Family Assistance Program update. And for this, Don, Rob, Don will give you guys a rest and we'll have Manager Crumstock take the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Obviously, we were asked to do the informational update where we sit at right now. And I can tell you from, if I start with the Business Assistance Program, since it's been launched, when I wrote this, it was three businesses and now we're up to nine businesses that have inquired and obviously applications sent out at that point in time. Obviously, as I mentioned before, we are going to also try putting this, any money that's actually distributed into our CARES Act with Cook County to try getting reimbursed, specifically because it is a new program, it is designated for COVID-19 in an economic way. And we believe with all the webinars and all the information that we've heard, it should be uncovered if we do distribute anymore. Obviously, if all nine do return applications, we would be back to the city council because of, obviously that's more than what we have requested for this initial new business assistance program that is really only for 2020. It only has a shelf life per the resolution of just this year. So obviously you have some of the information before you and again, that's the first part. The second part is the city's temporary family assistance program. Obviously, we've had numerous calls. Ms. DeLeon actually is the primary and deals with it and then I'm only the secondary, but sometimes when people see me, they have their conversations with me, it's just a little bit easier. It's been a little interesting with people responding to the TFA because originally between either what they heard or what they read, they were asking for free money and then it takes some time to go through the process and what the TFA actually is and some of the rules and obviously some of the other items that may, we always offer to send an application to them or we leave it up at the front desk if they don't want to give us a answer or their address. But at this point in time, we only have one application that's out there. That individual, we do know, is looking for the rent, has not received their eviction notice at this point in time, which is the requirement for that. We do also, when we have them on the telephone, we do take some time to talk about different opportunities between the township, between Salvation Army, between anything else, if we are becoming their first conduit with any questions. But again, at this point in time, there's really only one application. As I've mentioned to a few of you, I believe that that end of September, October time period will probably have more conversations and more people asking for it. The courts just opened up again for evictions and some of the other pieces. I think that it's going to take some time for people to get through a process. My understanding from the court process is that they're doing some of the evictions that are not COVID-related, so they were already in process before, then they would be moving to it. So it's a program that still has the full $5,000. And again, we do talk about it. There are other avenues for people to be out there, but at this point in time, no money has been utilized on it. And again, it's kind of interesting and I mentioned in the write-up, we did have one person and again, it just was misinformation that they had or whatever. They wanted to move a family member into Rolling Meadows from another municipality. But again, we're very specific on what the policy is. We're more than happy to send out any application and let people decide if they're going to file it and then actually walk them through an application. But again, this is in for update. My feeling, like I said before, I believe that maybe at the end of September, beginning of October, we'll be seeing more and we'll be back to the city council. The one caveat that I would say is that because this was already an established program, it does not look like CARES money could be used to reimburse the city if we do it, but we're still asking questions, but at this point in time, we do know that the business one would actually be available for reimbursement if Cook County still keeps their rules, which are their main rules. And again, like I said, this is really informational at this point in time, just to bring it back, but it would be coming back with additional information at a later date that I think it's going to happen.
Thank you, Manager Crumstock. I see Alderman Budmats and Alderman Vessesi's hands up, so we'll start with you, Alderman Budmats.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So in reviewing the application for the business, for the business plan, I noticed that it's considerably shorter than the one that we have for the family plan. It doesn't ask anything, questions about if they've asked their employees for money or family members for money or anything, those kind of questions that are in our family application, they really don't mirror each other and it doesn't seem like we're as, as we're as tough with our businesses and asking to make sure that they've explored all the other avenues before, before coming to us, whereas our, our family application is, is pretty far-reaching. I don't want it to anybody to think that there's not need. I spoke with the local representative from the Salvation Army today, and she told me that since the COVID-19 has started, they've granted over $41,000 to Rolling Meadows residents for rent and for and for utility payments. So that there is a need in Rolling Meadows amongst the residents and apparently that organization has figured out how to how to take care of our residents. And the fact that we've only we haven't had any applications that have been processed or fully processed or whatever seems to me to indicate that our our program is not as effective as theirs based on the results that they're getting. And so if we have a short application that's already had, you know, it looks like it's going to have nine applications for the business. First of all, I don't hear about how we're not business friendly anymore, but besides that, it seems that we need to have that same level of we need to have our business program and our and our family program match because both are equally important to us in my in my estimation, anyway, that, you know, we depend on residents as well as business to make Rolling Meadows a great community that it is. So I in as much as the as the Salvation Army is doing such a great job at taking care of our residents and I would ask that we could revisit. I had a conversation with our city attorney today in regards to if if we can't get the funds to the people who need them in Rolling Meadows and the Salvation Army is capable of doing it, then maybe we just need to let them handle our program for us rather than rather than us do it and then and then not do it. So I'll yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Budmats. That reminds me, I want to circle back to that after Alderman Bessisi and O'Brien speak. So Alderman Bessisi, floor is yours.
Yes, I have a question for Manager Crumstock. He had said that we're we would not be able to submit the family portion of this for the as part of COVID relief. My question is, if we were to increase what our current amount of money that we're offering is, because I mean, I am anticipating there'll be a lot more demand once evictions start starting. Would that be eligible?
The answer is, again, probably, but Cook County has a different definition of how they're dealing with it because it's an existing program. But we're trying to say this is related. Yes, it is an existing program. Yes, it does take a imminent foreclosure evidence of the landlord actually doing the eviction or any of those kind of things. But we're trying to say, hey, we would only have $5,000 regularly. Anything over that is probably related to COVID-19. But Cook County is the final determinant on that, and that's where they've been pretty, I want to say stringent at this point in time, that they say they do not believe that, but we do believe it is. So even if we're filing, we're going to file that in there and if they say no, that's the final decision. But you are correct that we have our own decision, but Cook County is the one who actually distributes the money overall.
Okay. And I know it's hypothetical because right now our our dollar value is still at 5,000. But if we do wind up going up higher at some point, and as a council feel the need to do that, I would assume when we're filing this, we could we would show Cook County, okay, over the last or the life of this program, whatever, this is how much we've given out per year based on COVID. This is what we're being asked for this year.
That that's how we're trying to package it if we actually did that. But we believe how we're interpreting and reading it because we can attribute it to COVID-19. But again, they look at it as an existing program. We're looking at it as an economic program. So and again, they're the final decision on it, but we would use as much benefit slash documentation slash history that we can try to justify everything that we're doing to get a reimbursement.
That's all I have right now. I may.
All right, thank you, Alderman Bessisi. Let's go ahead and move on to Alderman O'Brien.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'm in agreement with Alderman Budmats. I did think that was my understanding of when we talked about the business one is that would mirror the application would mirror the the family assistance need one. But I do appreciate just a couple of other comments. I do appreciate the information Alderman Budmats shared with all of us. To me, that's my understanding of what the council's hope was is to me that $41,000 that Salvation Army has spent to date, I appreciate him getting that information for us, is that's what my understanding from June and July is that the city would be the last resource for residents. So I feel that $41,000 is outstanding and the work that the Salvation Army does, maybe some of us personally donate to the Salvation Army, having it be a private entity that does this, that's obviously their mission is to assist others. So I actually think that does confirm that what are at least my remembrance of the June and July discussions was is absolutely the city's available if the other things were the other resources were exhausted. So I think that that's great information to have. It confirms that what we're looking for, the Salvation Army is there to assist. Then obviously, we talked about Palatine Township existing or assisting and then Outgrowth Township is assisting. So that was great information to have. I think that does show what the council talked about and moved in that direction. And I even do remember that I don't know that there was overall majority consensus, but we even did talk and it'd be a longer discussion of earmarking another $5,000, $10,000 and allocating that to the Salvation Army with that earmark strictly for Rolling Meadows residents. So I think that does justify additional conversation around that opportunity if need be, but I just wanted to thank Alderman Budmats for that. It does seem like what our intent was is that Salvation Army assists townships and then and then to us. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. And I think to Alderman Budmats' point, like I said before, without putting words in his mouth, Salvation Army seems to have a better handle on the system of assisting residents. And therefore, if the city of Rolling Meadows could just make that deposit of funding, then the staff don't have to utilize their time and energy into helping with that system of relief because it's baked into the Salvation Army's model, right? And so it takes it takes it from hands free for us and turnkey to the Salvation Army to assist our residents rather than having them go to the Salvation Army and then after the Salvation Army is exhausted, then come to the city of Rolling Meadows after going through Palatine Township, et cetera.
And I don't disagree with that, Mr. Mayor. I think some of it even got into the legal perspective as if Attorney Wolf had to look into that and stuff. I would be fully supportive of re-discussing that again.
Yes, and that's where we're going to go with if we cannot get to deposit funding into the Salvation Army, then I want, like I told Manager Crumstock last week, when I made mention of ComEd's utility relief, there's opportunities where we can assist by automatically paying residents' utility bills directly online for them. So we should think of other mechanisms if we can't. And if we're not having enough residents come to the city, then we have to make sure that we have mechanisms available to still offer the relief because the reality of of relief being needed exists. And whether or not they're coming through the threshold of City Hall, it doesn't mean that it's still not there. And we need to make sure that if if one action is not working, that we have a couple others set up because I feel like if we don't, we're going to fail our residents for some reasons that we can do better with. Alderman Sanoyka.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So a couple of things that we've discussed so far, the first being that when we're talking about these quarterly updates on this program, I was anticipating much more of an insight as to the the types of calls that were that we were receiving and why those participants did not pursue an application. And it doesn't sound like we necessarily we have that information. And so to Alderman Budmats' point, I think that that is that would that would suggest that the city would need some help in this arena of expertise. So to follow up with that, we did request as a council on May 19th at that Committee of the Hall that we would like to pursue grant opportunities with the city and a third party similar to what other municipalities do, such as the city of Chicago, that can help us leverage their expertise and their auditing powers and allow the city to continue to pursue city matters regarding COVID-19 and and just regular functions as a municipality. From my understanding, this is this is this kind of information, knowing that 40 over $41,000 in aid have been distributed in utilities and rent alone is an insight that's really important for us as policymakers to know how we're doing as a city, both from a relief standpoint and also from an economic development standpoint. It's really insensitive, I think, to discuss things like eating out if we have individuals who can't make water and electricity bills. So that's helpful from just by itself to have that information. Additionally, it helps for landowner or for property owners and landlords to know that the city is also interested in the economic development of the area by ensuring that we are going to also assist in addition to the county, state, and local charitable organizations that are also going to ensure that people aren't evicted from their homes. I think that that is valuable and something that the city should be pursuing just from an economic development standpoint, not just from a moral standpoint. And so not to say that I'm disappointed, but but I'm kind of disappointed that we don't have anything more concrete regarding that that grant possibility and that grant partnership that we said that we were going to look at back in May. So I would want to know what next steps would be as far as as far as that process is concerned.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. So are you looking for staff to outline a plan?
That's what I was expecting tonight. I don't see that, but that I was expecting to see what how how we would pursue a policy or a resolution to provide a grant to the Salvation Army or an equivalent, an equivalent organization. It seems like the Salvation Army has been the most vocal as far as its support and it appears to have the expertise that we're looking for. But that's but see, that's what I wanted to discuss tonight was if there were any other organizations or other methods to to ensure that our residents are able to stay in their homes. But I don't I don't see that tonight. So that's something I would I would like to see for next time.
Okay, thank you. And yes, that that is an agreeable point. That's where I mentioned if we if we if we can't get this funding out, then we have to find other opportunities to afford funding to our residents, whether it's by going directly to NICOR and ComEd and being able to work on direct payments for our residents if we can't go through the Salvation Army so they can take care of their rent or mortgages. We need to have alternatives established and well-defined ones. Otherwise, we are potentially failing residents who will need us at their lowest. Alderman Diasis.
Thank you. My question is to to Barry Crumstock. Barry, if we created a new program and called it COVID-19 Assistance, would that qualify for reimbursement?
So from our understanding, yes, it would because it would be new program to respond to something and they would not look at what's already in the existing program.
Okay, then then I would suggest that that we look into that because as Mr. O'Brien stated, we're the last resort. And if there's a possibility of being reimbursed for that money, then I definitely want to put some more money into that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Diasis. Alderman Bessisi?
Yes, thank thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to add on to Alderman Diasis' thought there. I would think if we do decide to create a new program there, we can easily mention to the state that the existing program is just a regular program, non-COVID related, and applicants that are, you know, not showing any any job loss or anything like that due to COVID would would be in that program. But anybody for that does can prove it's COVID-related would be in this new program. The other question, the other comment I have is I know Alderman Budmats stated something like $41,000. I believe he stated, and correct me if I'm misstating this, that it was since the the COVID, you know, the outbreak. My I'm kind of wondering how much the Salvation Army was giving in general prior to that. Is that a increase of $41,000 or or not? You know, I'm not trying to say we shouldn't we shouldn't do our part and I'm all for doing more for our residents. I was somewhat dismayed when we when it didn't get passed the first time. But I'm just curious about the Salvation Army number. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Bessisi. Attorney Wolf, I see your hands up before we continue with other council members.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to provide comment to Alderman Sanoyka's request regarding looking into partnering with a third party like the Salvation Army with respect to the administration administration of assistance to the city of Rolling Meadows residents. Recently, we've, you know, we've had an opportunity to look into the issue from a legal perspective. I I had a concern regarding the constitutionality of what could be considered a donation to another organization. However, as Alderman Sanoyka has indicated, a program such as our Family Assistance Program, which provides assistance to our residents so they could pay, you know, when they're in need so that they aren't evicted and do assist in payments for their homes and utility payments similar to our program, those things could arguably be economic development for the city. And so using the Salvation Army as a mechanism to administer those funds could be legal from a constitutional perspective. What what we needed to do was make sure that any funds that would be donated from the city would in fact go to city residents. And we've gotten some affirmation with the help of Alderman Budmats with his communications with the Salvation Army that would indicate that that there is indeed an opportunity to be able to administer those funds to city residents and to track those funds. Now, from an administration standpoint, from the city's perspective, I don't know the other concerns that would be related to that or the impact of that. In addition, we're talking now about potential COVID reimbursement. And if if the funds are given directly to the Salvation Army, I don't know that the city would be able to get reimbursement for those funds that are directed to the Salvation Army. I don't know that that's not the case, but as Manager Crumstock has indicated, there are certain requirements that you have to illustrate in order to get that kind of reimbursement. So what what we would need, now that we know we can move forward with that, potentially, we would need direction from the council as to their position on it first. And then from a staff level, we could potentially meet with the Salvation Army. But I think what we need to understand here, because it was just proposed by Alderman Diasis, the potential for creating a new program that's administered by the city, which of course, we can do as well, which direction we want to go and which direction, you know, avenue we would like to take. But Alderman Sanoyka, we can have that discussion tonight and can get staff direction if, you know, to move forward with a third party like the Salvation Army and partner with them, if that's what this council would like.
So we'll we'll conduct a straw vote after this. So we'll conduct a straw vote after this. To my understanding, for clarification, the recommendation Alderman Diasus made with establishing a new program, it becomes potentially reimbursable from the state as a result, or from the feds? Who is it reimbursable by, for starters? And what's the likelihood that it is?
So our filing is to Cook County. They have federal money from CARES. So our filing, again, is to Cook County once we would ask for the reimbursement.
A county reimbursement. And then I guess we have to figure out from the council. Let's finish this round of dialogue and then we'll go into the straw votes. But then identify which is the best opportunity for both the city and the residents from here. Attorney Wolf, do you have anything further? Your hand is up and I'd like you to have the opportunity if there's more to interject. All right, then moving on to Alderman O'Brien and Alderman Budmatz.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And this is actually a question to follow up on, a comment that you had had referencing a conversation with Manager Kromstock last week. Obviously, there was like the ComEd relief program, the NICOR relief program, and Governor Pritzker just extended the rental program for another two weeks today. The deadline is now the 28th. What was your, I wanted to make sure I was tracking correctly, that you said we could just pay the ComEd bill on behalf of residents if they don't come to us? Like, how does that work? Is like, it's like an angel funding type thing? But how do we know that Susie Smith down the street needs her ComEd bill paid? Do we as a municipality have insight into utilities?
Listen, yeah, what it would be is, one, we wouldn't just like anonymously start donating funds into residents' accounts in any capacity, but we would work directly with our ComEd representative and our residents. We would make an announcement to our residents that if they are facing difficulties, we as a city have the ability to help with some relief, right? And then from there, if you're looking at your monitor, there's this one simple way of just helping others in ComEd's direct deposit here. Give a ComEd gift certificate to anyone on your gift list. But we can tweak these opportunities. I believe the council has the email too, because I don't know if I'm the only one that gets it from ComEd through our representative, but I believe you may have these emails, where we can set up assistance programs as a result of what ComEd has baked in place here. ComEd also offers independent bill assistance. So if our residents were to call ComEd and say they need to be put on some sort of payment program, they're probably already working on that. But if we could go one step further and maybe pay off a balance or pay amongst bill or to, you know, it's just one other facet that we can assist our residents.
It'd be more of a pointed outreach. Is leveraging our ComEd rep and the data available there be more of a pointed outreach, targeted outreach to residents that can miss versus the general communication we try and do about the assistance plan?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That was what I was just looking for, was the clarification, how that would work.
Yeah, and I think in general, we need to do a better job communicating to our residents that if we're gonna have a program in place, we need to at least let them know well that there is a program available. You know, I can survey 10 people on my block and I bet you one of them would know that there's an opportunity here. And I think that's a little disheartening. So we should do a better job letting our residents know.
Great, thank you.
Alderman Budmatz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In response to Mr. Besessi's question, or Alderman Besessi's question, I did not ask for, ask for the amount that they've normally give to Rolling Meadows, but based on the conversation, residents, I'm sorry. Based on the conversation, it seems like that was a considerable uptick in the amount of assistance that they've been providing our residents. And this was, those were dollars just since COVID has struck. I think she said March. So like three, four months, we're looking at that kind of input of dollars or influx of dollars from the Salvation Army to our community residents. So that's substantial. It seemed to be much more than usual. And then based on Alderman Diasus's suggestion, when I had the conversation with Salvation Army, it sounds like earmark funds for residents. We could even earmark funds for residents suffering from the effects of COVID or employment problems from COVID. So for us to earmark these funds and they will spend that in the way that we ask them to. And then, and then that would make it that much more likely that we'd be able to get those funds reimbursed, especially if the, if we're depending on the expertise of the Salvation Army to help us judiciously distribute those funds versus looking at it as a donation to the Salvation Army. And then they do what they want with it. So I think it might help us get it reimbursed and it might help us get more money to our residents if it was reimbursable. And so I would ask that we empower the city attorney to dot the i's and cross the t's and see if such a program like this, if it's approved by the council would be reimbursable, that would be an awesome side benefit. But if it's legal for us to do that so that we at least get help to our residents, and then it would be, that would be great. But even so, if it's not reimbursable, it's still something we need to consider for our residents. Either way, we're here to help people not get reimbursed. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Alderman Sanoyka.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I would also support Alderman Budmatz's points about us utilize, we're basically leveraging the expertise of the Salvation Army or at least partner with them. So what I'm looking for is if we're working with them and they say, okay, well, we have some residents that are seeking utility forgiveness or utility, or help with utilities, and then we can say, well, they're still eligible for this program through the city or through ComEd's partnership, then that's something that the Salvation Army can prepare weekly or communicate with our city manager or our finance director moving forward and vice versa. To previous discussions about creating a new fund just for COVID, I would say that that should be the grant money and we continue to keep this $5,000 for our own emergency temporary family assistance program so that if there's anything that the Salvation Army can't pay. I believe when we had our social services outreach coordinator speak with us back in May, she stated that the limits for the Salvation Army was $600. That doesn't solve the issue with housing being at least 1,500, which is why we raised our cap for housing in the first place for our own program. But that can also be something that I'm sure that the city attorney can discuss as far as the grant by either doubling that $600 cap or some sort of other arrangement to make it useful for our residents. And that's what, that's what we're really looking for. We're looking for the expertise and the auditing power of being, that the Salvation Army can give to us so that way we have very concrete numbers. We can see what kind of an impact these funds are having. And we can also have a pretty good idea of how this pandemic is affecting our city economically and potentially, you know, in other ways as well and make us more effective policymakers in the future. So I would be in agreement with that for the straw vote that we'll be taking shortly.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. Alderman Veneziano.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I wanted to share this with all of you. I was recently in a resident's home working and they were faced with, do they pay rent or buy their prescriptions for the month? Which is a very tough decision to make. And so they chose to pay rent, which is obviously very detrimental. And so the resident knew nothing of our program. So I informed the resident of our program. And so they did reach out to get the information. And they were very overwhelmed because they had not gone to one of the other resources that was possible. But they had exhausted all the other options. And so they, at that point, the person was just very overwhelmed and we don't have that infrastructure set up to kind of facilitate the program and help the person walk through this whole process. So the person did turn around and go to Salvation Army and they were able to help this resident pretty quickly. They said the turnaround was very quickly, actually. And so I'm grateful that this program exists within our community of the Salvation Army. But I'm also kind of disheartened that we have this program established in our, in our community that we did and it was a prime example that it needed to help this resident and it wasn't able to be utilized because our infrastructure of the program is not what it needs to be. So I am in all of support of if we can earmark money to Salvation Army to help our residents, despite the fact of possibly getting reimbursed from Cook County. I don't know how realistic that would be at this point. I would really like to see what we can do with the Salvation Army. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You know what? I clicked it, but I didn't click well and then kept going. So anyway, so the council knows when donating to a nonprofit, whether it's 501(c)(3), (c)(6), et cetera, if you put on their restrictions for your donation, where if you give $100 and you write on that check for your electrical bills, that nonprofit has to honor the direction that you're giving for that funding. And so for us with the program of giving this donation to the Salvation Army so that they can offer relief to residents of a 60008 zip code, they have to honor that by law. So I think right now we, Alderman Veneziano and O'Brien, you have your hands up. I don't know, Veneziano's not. So Alderman O'Brien, after this comment of yours, I do want to get these straw votes taken care of.
Absolutely. It was a question that's gonna lead to the straw vote. I think this might be more for Manager Kromstock. Are you able to just confirm, Manager Kromstock? I know we're talking about outsourcing something that we do from, I mean, just an overall perspective. This is by no means, based on the volume we've seen, I just wanted confirmation. I mean, it wouldn't be impacting Dr. Nieves or Joyce's job, day-to-day type stuff, since this is a fraction of what they do. Just before we all agree, I think there's agreement that Salvation Army would be able to be more efficient. That might be the way to go. But from a staffing perspective, this is not taking away more than, I'm guessing, less than 5% of somebody's job responsibilities. Is that right, Mr. Kromstock?
Probably .001, because they have their own responsibilities. But yes, and it goes back to seeing what city attorney Melissa Wolf can actually tailor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all I had.
Okay, then at this time, what I want to do is get the show of hands here for donating to the Salvation Army to provide financial relief program for Rolling Meadows residents. All those in favor of establishing that program or getting the results of that to make sure we can do this?
Mr. Mayor, donations or a grant?
A grant. I mean, whatever word you want to call it. We have to provide funds to the Salvation Army, whatever mechanism it's titled under. I'll leave that up to someone else. But if you're in favor of giving funds to the Salvation Army to offer relief to Rolling Meadows residents. So I have Alderman Besessi, Alderman Budmatz, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Veneziano, and Alderman Sanoyka in favor. Thank you. You can lower your hands for them. And then those opposed to delivering funds to the Salvation Army to offer financial relief to Rolling Meadows residents, those opposed. Okay, so some people are abstaining. How about this, since you didn't vote, please show your hand if you're abstaining from a vote here. I should see a couple hands come up. Alderman Cannon and Alderman Diasus abstained from the vote. All right, and the next one is to establish a new COVID-19 program, new COVID-19 relief program so that the county may reimburse us. Now with this, I think Manager Kromstock, I don't know if it's a guarantee, but this is for you, for staff, to explore the opportunity of establishing this COVID-19 relief program?
That is correct, because as we said, we could create something new, a little bit different, change some of the requirements, just like the Salvation Army doesn't ask for the eviction, doesn't ask for certain things. We can change the program. We have to bring it to you to look at. So we would be turning it around as quickly as we can because it needs to be approved.
Okay, so yeah, please raise your hands if you're in favor of staff establishing a new COVID-19 relief program. I see Alderman Budmatz, Alderman Diasus, Alderman Besessi, Alderman Sanoyka, Alderman Cannon, Alderman Veneziano, and Alderman O'Brien. It's unanimous for staff to go ahead and develop the new COVID-19 relief program. All right, so Alderman Budmatz, I see your hand is still up, same with Alderman Cannon. There's something to share. Great. If not, are there any closing remarks? Is there anything else we need to establish for this last topic this evening? Alderman Diasus.
Thank you. With respect to donating money to the Salvation Army, I abstain because I wanted to hear back from the attorney whether that money was going to be eligible for Cook County reimbursement before we just gave the money away. So if the attorney could at some point, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further on this subject before we conclude the evening here? Okay, seeing none, I'd like to see a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Alderman Diasus, and thank you, Alderman Besessi, for the second. At this point, is there any discussion on adjourning? And if not, then I'd like to have the clerk call the roll so we can officially adjourn.
Sanoyka.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmatz.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Besessi.
Yes.
Diasus.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this meeting is adjourned. Have a wonderful evening, everybody.
Good night.